We can get started. Hello, Dr. Braybrand. Welcome back, Chase. It's good to see you.
Good to be here.
So it was suggested to me a moment ago that I put into place some rules for the first work session. You're allowed one question, 30 words or less, no follow-ups, no go-backs.
We'll come back to this later.
All right, we will. Now, we're back to reality, okay. But I would encourage all of us, we're scheduled until 8 o'clock, so let's try to keep the two hours. So let's plan to finish by 8:10. So that means, let's try to be efficient with our questions and not repetitive. And let's try to minimize the sidebars and rabbit holes, if we can, if there are any. People are tempted to go down. Unfortunately, I think some of this is difficult material, so of course, we have to ask the tough questions that we are obligated as public servants to ask. So with that in mind, I will turn this over to, no, not Chase, to Michael Drager to get started. Or maybe Marty wants to kick things off on the Unified Scale Compensation Study update. So if we could, I think, joking aside, I believe that Michael said his presentation would be about 20 minutes. So if we can hold our questions and get on the list until he's made the presentation, that probably would be the most efficient way to run. Thank you.
So, good evening. I am actually going to start. It's nice to see you all. Well, I'd be lying if it's that great to be back rather than being at home, but duty does call. So I'm happy to be here, and this is a continuation of a conversation that we've had with the board now, actually, as long as I've been here, so going on two and a half years about our comp study. And tonight, we're going to share information around the implementation of Schedules A, B, and C of the Unified Scale. This is ongoing work, and so even though we're going to focus in on the scale design this evening and what that looks like, the actual slotting, as we continue the class and compensation work, will also continue over the next year. And so really, tonight, we're honing in on those scale designs and what they're going to look at as we go into the next fiscal year. Michael Drager, D. Holly Brown, and several members of our team, along with our friends from Finance, have been working very hard on this. And Michael's going to run us through the presentation this evening, so I'll turn it over to Michael to get it started.
Thank you. Good evening. As Chase said, we're continuing some of this work and wanted to come back with an update of information to the board on where we're at with the non-teacher scales. And then we'll kind of open up before discussion and questions afterwards. So I'll go fairly quickly through the first few slides because it's really recapping information that we've shared with the board in previous updates with the compensation study. So the first there is just reiterating what the purpose of the study was. Again, this kicked off back in 2015, and it's really around supporting Goal III in the premier workforce. And we know Dr. Braybrand has certainly driven home market competitive salaries and is a big component of that. Previously, we set up compensation study goals with the board in terms of developing new models to help recruit and retain employees to the organization. With that, we wanted to ensure market competitiveness, considering internal equity, ensure sustainability. Certainly, we want to pay all employees more, but we know we have that finite window of resources in which we need to work. And we established previously some guiding principles with the board in terms of, we want to make sure that the pay models would reflect employee input, that no employee's salary would be decreased as a result of any new pay models, and that the new scales would be easily understood by recruits to FCPS and those outside FCPS. We wanted to recap the work to date. Again, this kicked off in 2015 with our market study. We came back during the 2015-16 and shared the market study results with the board. Also, in March of 2016, we had an employee survey and held employee focus groups within groups of the workforce. And at that time is when we also established the compensation philosophy and strategy. Just to recap work during the 2016-17 school year, we developed new salary scale recommendations for teachers, school-based administrators, classroom instructional support, which are your instructional assistants, PHTAs and PHAs, and Schedule H, which was our contracted hourly positions with transportation and food services. With the teacher scale, again, we're currently in a multi-year implementation of that. The school-based administrator scale was originally slotted for implementation for FY '18, but then deferred for budget reasons. We did implement the classroom instructional support scale for FY '18. And also Schedule H, the contracted hourly for transportation and food services, was implemented for FY '18 as well. The next slide is one that we shared with the update last April around the Unified Scale and some of the challenges we face in terms of looking at the market and those market matches. When you do this work with the teachers, it's a little bit easier in terms of it being more straightforward in terms of the role of a teacher being the same in other classrooms and other divisions. And a challenge here with the Unified Scale is having over 800 position titles. That covers approximately 5,000 employees that are both school-based and non-school-based employees. When looking at the market, it can be challenging with exact matches for some different reasons. One is the difference in organization size, structure and design. In some cases, not all market segments are available. So for instance, an accounting position here, we can usually find in other school districts and other local governments in the private sector. But maybe you're educational specialist out of ISD, you're going to find only in other school districts. And also, another challenging piece is the additional compensation that is provided in the private sector and not always having a clear picture of what those stock options or bonuses may be that are included in the compensation for those individuals. And the big finding from the market study for the Unified Scale positions is that last bullet there, that on average, current pay rates were below market at the range minimum, but closer to the market at the maximums. Also, just recapping, again, some information shared previously with the board, just in terms of the school districts and governments that were used as part of the market study originally. Seven school districts there, Alexandria, Arlington, DC, Loudoun County, Montgomery County, Prince George's, and Prince William. We also compared positions were appropriate to five governments, and also, private sector data were applicable with salary survey information. So last spring, again, we recommended breaking the Unified Scale up into three separate schedules, Schedule A, B, and C. And again, this would cover all support positions for which we haven't provided any recommendations on scales previously. So Schedule A, again, we are looking at the placement of overtime positions, such as custodians, office assistants, and trades in facilities. Schedule B, covering professional-level positions, such as social workers, psychologists, analysts, and specialists. And Schedule C, covering senior management positions, such as principals, assistant principals, and coordinator threes and directors out of the departments. So when looking at the design of those schedules, one of the things we kept in mind was the design framework which we've been using for the other recommended salary scales that we've been bringing to the board. And the philosophy there has, again, been the faster earnings at the beginning of the scale. So larger increases at the earlier steps, with those trailing off as you progress through the scale. And our design also maintains the methodology of annual pay increases for employees. On average, the scales will provide market competitive salaries between 95% and 105% of market average. Within that, we're still going to have variability, and Chase kind of referenced the ongoing classification work, and that provides the opportunity to kind of further refine the market position for all of those 800 jobs on the scale. The schedules will allow for more flexibility to match those different markets. And another piece we've been doing with all the scales and have done here is eliminating the longevity steps. And with the current Unified Scale, right now, Step 18 is a hold step before you proceed to longevity. So that requires one year or two years at Step 18, and also requires currently 15 years of consecutive service with FCPS before being eligible for the longevity step on the current Unified Scale. So as we looked at the design of Schedule A and the current unified scale limitations, again, it was misaligned in terms of positions that we matched to the market to that 95-105%. Overall, we took about 100 positions out of the 800 positions as a sampling to match to the market. And when we looked at the Schedule A position matches, what we found at the minimum side of the scale was that 30% of those matches were less than 95% of the total market, so all three of those segments were applicable. And 33% of those position matches were less than 95% of just the school market. Looking on the other side of the maximum salaries, 21% of those position matches were more than 105% of the total market. And actually, no positions were more than 105% when just looking at the school market for those position matches. So in terms of looking at Schedule A design and looking at kind of where those minimums and maximums fell out, what we've done is looked to raise the minimum pay by about 10% to 11%, that's starting salary point, and maintain salaries at the top of the scale. And again, this is going to cover about 3,500 employees. And those employees, again, are your custodians, clerical, and trades in facilities positions, those overtime eligible positions. One piece we've tried to do here with the design of the scale is that targeting that $1,450 living wage after a scale adjustment. That's $1,450 as it is today, but we know we're trying to hit a moving target, and the county has recently advertised a updated living wage of $1,483. So again, we're trying to hit that moving target. The Schedule A design does reduce the number of steps from 20 to 15 steps, and we've provided the graphic there in terms of how that impacts the width at the bottom of the slide. So again, the block's just kind of showing a visual representation of the 20 steps as they previously were, captured on the top. And then the bottom showing how we've kind of reduced that down in the width to 15 steps, which is closer aligned with the market. The next page is trying to capture, or does capture, the minimum and maximum salaries for the Schedule A design versus what's currently on the Unified Scale. So the top bar there references the minimum grade and minimum step for the first grade on the current Unified Scale, which is Grade V for custodians, the 27-073, to a max grade and step of the US-19 pay lane of 87-841. And for the new Schedule A, you can see we've raised that minimum to about 29-861, and again, maintained pay at the top around $87,845. Overall, in terms of moving employees to the new Schedule A, the implementation would provide an increase on average of 2.3% for those employees. So now, looking at Schedule B positions, and again, kind of looking at the current scale limitations there. Again, Schedule B is covering social workers, psychologists, analysts, and specialists in the departments. Again, we saw the same thing, was there that kind of misalignment with the 95% to 105% with the current scale. And in this case, looking at the minimum salaries, 47% of the position matches for Schedule B jobs were less than 95% of the total market. 45% of those matches were less than 95% of the school market. And on the maximum side, 26% of position matches were more than 105% of the market, and 21% of those matches were more than 105% of the school market. Again, looking at the minimums being below market, we've increased those by about 11% to 12% in terms of that starting point for the Schedule B, and raised the salaries at the top of the scale by approximately 3%. In this case, we're looking at 17 steps, or reduced width from 76% to 64%. And again, we have the representation there of the steps with the current width of the Unified Scale reduced down to the 17 steps. One thing I failed to note on the earlier slide, too, is in the backslides, we do have employee distribution reports, just in terms of where employees fall on the current Unified Scale, or collapsed into quartiles for the different steps, so you can see that there. Again, Schedule B design, in terms of what that looks like in terms of the salaries for the minimum grade and step on that scale and the max grade and step on that schedule. 51-70-75 currently to 122-471. Again, the minimum going up to about $57-574. And you can see the maximum point there increases a little bit to the 126. This, again, like Schedule A, on average, provides an increase for moving employees to this schedule of about 2.3%.
Yes, before Michael keeps going, on Schedule C, which is about some of our school-based administrators, our directors, administrative positions, I know there was some community concern shared when we put out some of this information on Board Docs. And I want to just upfront, share some main points around Schedule C before Michael continues through the same format that he's done with the other schedules. When we looked at Schedule C, it was far below market at the very bottom of the scale, similar to remember when we were doing the teacher scale, you all were doing the teacher scale, and the below-market was really in the middle of the teacher scale. For Schedule C, the below-market was really at the beginning of the scale. The new Step 1 for Schedule C is between that 95% and 105% of the market. So it was really readjusting Schedule C to the same target as we have with all of the schedules. I think it's also important, and then it's in bold, but I want to say it and hear you all have me saying it, 98% of the people on Schedule C are going to receive a raise of 3% or less, 98%. 70% will be receiving less than a 1% raise. We only have three of our Schedule C employees who are receiving a raise equal or greater to what the teacher salary increase was. And that's because they were low, they were at the bottom of that scale that was under-market. None of those three are receiving a salary increase of greater than 8%. So I just wanted to sort of put that Schedule C in context. The great majority, 98%, are getting a 3% or less raise from the schedule. 70% of them are getting less than a 1% raise. And we'll work to continue to try to better communicate as we do these slides when we're sharing steps and scales, and we put percentages out that may mislead folks in the community who are concerned to make sure that we're putting our dollars around focusing on teachers and school support folks and folks who are under-market. And that's what we've done here in Schedule C as well.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. So continuing on in kind of the same format for some other items on Schedule C. Again, Schedule C now covering positions of coordinator threes and directors from the departments. And again, looking at that misalignment with the current scale. When you look at the placement of minimum salaries, of the matches we had, 77% of those were falling less than the 95% of the total market. And 88% of those matches were less than 95% of the school market. And then on the maximum salary side, only 4% of the position matches were more than 105% of actually both the total market and the school market. So when we looked at these positions for Schedule C, one of the things we decided to do was go ahead and use the school-based administrator scale pay lanes that were previously shared for the SBA scale last year to cover all senior management positions. So essentially, now, we would look at having them cover not only assistant principals and principals and school-based administrators that we've done, but also include them linked with coordinator threes and directors in the department. So your grades 27 through 32 positions. This is actually kind of similar to the current structure we have in terms of keeping those jobs linked. And so we'll look to map those department support positions over to the equivalent SBA pay lanes. And again, we feel this provides, it provides the ability for movement between school-based and non-school-based positions for those leaders in the organization. So looking at the Schedule C design, again, covering about 850 employees, which out of that, 650 are roughly of those school-based administrators which we already addressed with the SBA scale last year. So about 200 of those are those coordinator threes and director senior management positions. Again, it raises minimum pay by 28% to 38%, as Scott was highlighting. But again, there's a difference between the starting point and where people are actually falling on the scale. And so we're eliminating those unused portions of the scale that we had. And increases potential earnings at the maximum level by about 5%. The width here is only going to be 38%, 15 steps down from the 20, so reducing the market width, or the width from 76% to 38%, which is more close to the market there. And again, we do have a quartile report, it's actually, or it's on Slide 25 there, showing kind of the distribution of those employees across those steps, which is kind of what Dr. Braybrand was already highlighting. The Schedule C design overall, when looking at that min grade and step, again, the minimum that was currently being listed but really not used is that 72-178, which now pulls up to that 94-596, and the maximum of previously of 155, and now with the new Schedule C of $163-712. Overall, the implementation of the scale, moving employees to this scale will provide an increase of 1.1%, and that's before any other adjustment. So in regards to implementation and the budget, again, the approach used for these scales is a little bit different from the teachers, but it's what we use for Schedule H as well as the classroom instructional support scale, which is moving employees to the closest but not less than dollar amount on that schedule. And the FY '19 budget did include the $17.9 million placeholder, which was for implementation of the non-teacher scales, which includes these scales, as well as the school-based administrator scale that was reviewed previously before any market adjustment. Also, just a reminder, in terms of the budget piece, I believe there's a work session coming up May 1st, so an opportunity there to dig in further on those pieces with the budget as well. In terms of next steps, and Chase kind of previewed this earlier, is the continuation of that classification work. So on average, again, this gets us within that 95% to 105% of the target for the market. But within that, again, there's still refinement that can occur and needs to occur. So what we're looking to do is move everyone to these new scales and then pick up with classification work on a cyclical basis or a rotating basis for those positions. With 800 positions, it's hard to do them in one year every year, so we're looking at a five-year rotational basis for that. We're looking at them first grouped by department. And of course, as we do that, we'll notify employees in advance, let them know what the timeline is, and follow up with those individuals as those changes occur. Just to wrap up here before we open it to discussion and questions, again, we have a couple appendix slides to just help show the distribution of where employees currently are on the Unified Scale. Again, you see the grades down the left-hand side from Grade V to 19. And then we've placed them into quartiles as to not be identifying because we have some places where you have one person on one grade and step, just so you can see the distribution. So this shows the distribution for Schedule A by those quartiles, and the key's off to the right there showing which steps are captured in each quartile. And then we have that for Schedule B positions and also Schedule C positions as well. So with that, I think we'll turn it over for discussion and questions.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I see Janie's got her hand up. I currently have four of you on the question-and-answer list, now five. Il Young Moon, Karen Keys-Gamaro, and then Karen Corbett-Sanders.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I sent in some of the questions that, since Mr. Wilson is giving me an opportunity to ask only one question, I'm going to ask just one question. Is that the rule?
Mr. Moon, you can ask more than one question. That was a joke.
As long as I limit my questions to 30 words.
Mr. Moon, maybe there's a cultural barrier, but that also was a joke.
I think that's a language barrier right here. Okay, so with that assurance, then I'll ask my questions. Okay, I'm going to go to, I'll be probably focusing on Schedule C, so if you don't mind. So Schedule C, we have already reviewed, Bold had previously reviewed, you know, principal, school-based administrator, and scholar. So today, probably, we are focusing on non-school-based Schedule C employees. And the number is about 200, correct. So my very first question goes to, what's on my, okay, I have, I guess, new PowerPoint. Page number might be different. It was 19 on yesterday's. Right, it was 19 on yesterday's with the distribution of employees. Distribution is not 19, it's 20, you think?
You're talking about history reports at the end, okay.
Now that's 20.
Schedule C for the distribution.
Schedule C, Schedule C, 25, I'm sorry. Okay, 25. First quartile, that's steps 1 through 5, we don't have any. So could somebody give a historical perspective of how we're not having any in first five steps?
It's a combination of one individual's coming from the outside, having been accepting positions at those grades, or those steps, and also just our promotional or transfer practices within the organization. It's just a matter of placement of where they end up. And a big driving point of that is where they start originally, and then the promotional opportunities and the stops they may have along the way to that point as kind of results in them being placed higher on the scale.
So, Mr. Drager, so how long have we had no one in the first quartile?
Yeah, looking back, I mean, at least the last four or five years, it's been pretty, kind of been this case that we haven't had individuals in these lower quartiles. Sometimes we kind of have people jumping in at four or five, we've seen, but mostly, it's been above that.
So when we have that 28% to 30% jump for the minimum pay, is that basically eliminating those first five steps?
Correct, it's eliminating roughly those.
That is resulting in such seemingly high percentage increase of the pay with the restructuring of Schedule C?
Correct, it's eliminating the first five or six steps there and bringing up that starting point where, again, we didn't have, they were unused.
Because practically speaking, realistically, we have not been using first five steps.
And it was below market, I mean, that's.
It was basically. But at the same time, we have, if I'm not mistaken, there are three individuals who may be getting 28% to 38% increase.
Not 28% to 38%.
That's back to the slide, if you want to go back a couple slides, right there.
So again, we have 3% that are kind of in those steps that are being dropped off, but they're also really close to where kind of the new starting point's going to be. So what this was trying to highlight is that certainly, any increases are not near that ballpark of 28% to 38%.
The maximum anyone will be receiving based upon schedule change, proposed schedule change, 8%.
Correct, and that's just these three individuals are kind of closer to that range.
Okay, now I'm going to go to, now I'm confused about this page number, where it says about 1% or 1.1% overall increase next year, 1.1%? Schedule C.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, page 19. All right, I'm going to have to go very slow on this one, okay? So for example, someone and somewhere in the middle of the schedule, current schedule, that person is going to be placed the next highest number. Or next highest, okay, next year.
Closest, but not less, yeah.
Closest, but not less. Correct. And you're saying that that adjustments overall for 200 people, or is that 1.1% for 850 or just 200?
It's the 1.1 for the 200.
200, okay. For 200 individuals, that adjustments will be, on the average, will be about 1.1%.
Correct.
My question goes to, what about the following year? Isn't that, because I'm looking at the maximum number, which will go from 155 to 163, is $8,000 increase, which is about maybe 5%, a little bit more than 5% at the top level. If all the adjusted steps follow the similar pattern, in the following year, the increase would be greater than 1%? I'm looking at, because I don't have that chart, that schedule.
What I think I hear you asking, so correct me if I'm wrong, is kind of what the change is to the average step beyond where it currently is.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm kind of looking over to my budget friends here to see if we have some information on that. But what I can say is the step interval increases on Schedule C are actually less, kind of in the middle and above steps as they are for Schedule B and A. So B and A, we talked about the larger increases earlier, about 4%, 4.5%.
I'm not asking about B and A. I'm only focusing on C. So if you could just address the C, compared to the current unified scale, on the average increase, average percentage increase between steps under current unified scale versus proposed scale, what is the rate of change? Because I understand about the next year, because you are just placing at the next highest number for the next year, which could be just a very small increase, that may be why it's only 1.1%. But when I look at the maximum, certainly, it's more than 1.1%, it's about 5%. So in the following, it has to be greater than that.
Right, so, but the concept, even though you're not asking about A and B, is similar, that the step increases at the lower end of the scale are greater. So I know what you're asking, Mr. Moon, but they're not going to see these 4% and 5% step increases in the out-years, because as our employees move towards the top of the scale.
Is the schedule available to be shared with us? Is a proposed share, proposed schedule available for us to see?
Sorry, and the schedules are posted in the narrative.
In the narrative. I think I do have that.
I think what Mr. Moon is asking is what's the percentage difference as you move from each step in the new Schedule C? It might be higher at the beginning, 3%, 4%, 2%. I think that's what he's asking. The first move is just to the new scale, and that move is only about 1.1%.
So if you could put it this way, if the average increase for under current scale is, let's say, 2.5%, what's the average percent increase in the new scale? Is that 2.6% or 3.6%? What would that be?
That average increase is 2%.
What increase is 2%?
The average step increase would be 2%.
In the new scale or?
On the new scale.
What about current scale?
Did you find it, Mr. Moon? It's on page eight of the narrative.
But I don't have a percentage increase. It's in the appendix. Oh, you said. Oh, you said new scale would be two percent, what is the current scale, average increase?
We can get that information for you, we're working on that.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll come back later, Mr. Wilson, I have some other questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moon. Actually, just, just very quickly, because I'm looking now at page eight in this, in the narrative, and this maximum shows one hundred and sixty-three, seven, twelve, and maybe I've got an old version of the narrative here, but it, the, the highest salary I see is one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, which would be pay grade eight.
Yes, and part of that is a carryover because it's a pay lane being used for the school-based administrator scale, because we have school-based administrators placed at that pay lane. In terms of support staff of that two hundred, the top step used is, or stop, top grade used, sorry, is US thirty-two, so that's why we have the comparison for the equivalent, which is the grade seven, the new grade seven of the one sixty-three, seven, twelve. And that's also what's displayed above is the grade thirty-two for the one fifty-five.
Okay.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Okay. I have some general questions. I don't know if we have looked at our salaries in terms of gender equality. I know we have a lot of women in, especially in our teaching profession, but in our leadership, I don't know if we need to, to possibly look at that. And then I also had questions about how our salaries compare with respect to county employees, and I don't know if we have done those comparisons previously.
So I'll take the, the first part. We've not necessarily done that analysis. We don't take gender into account when we place somebody in the salary scale, because we have scales, we, we look at their years of experience, we look at the position and where that equates. And so it's not like that we look at a profile of an individual and say that you're going to earn this much money based on this. And so having a salary scale is, allows us the ability to slot individuals based on objective factors that we use for all candidates that come to the, come to the division on that piece in terms of the comparison with county employees.
Let me, let me just ask, I, I understand the response, because typically, this is how we choose people, but that, what research shows is that's not, it doesn't shake out that way, right? So I just submit that it is irrespective of whether it is intentional or not.
And I think that speaks to a little bit about the ongoing work that we're going to do in terms of comp and classification, as really, once we have the scale set, then we can start looking at position-specific about where they need to fit, does there need to be adjustments? And then as we see concerns, whether that relates to gender, race, other factors about how we think people are being slotted, we can make that examination. And so I think it's something that, that, I, I understand your question and your point, that would be work that would be captured in the ongoing work over this next year, not necessarily in the scale design work.
I understand. As I said, I have overall questions, so that as we go forward, we have those things that might. Now, I think you were about to answer with respect to the county comparison.
Yeah, and with respect to the county, it was, the county as well as a few other local governments were included in that market, which I shared back on slide six. So certainly Fairfax County was one of those that was considered when we were looking at the comparisons for the market.
Okay, let me try to get the page straight here. I think it's on the old, I, I was looking at the old one, it was page eleven, I believe, where it talks about current Schedule B. Is that correct?
Is this right?
Find out in a minute. Okay.
The new twelve.
Right, twenty-six percent of the position matches were more than a hundred and five percent of the market, twenty-one percent of the position matches were more than a hundred and five percent of the school market. So do, do we know who those people are or what positions we're talking about?
We know what positions they are, and again, as Chase was saying, part of this is getting us to a scale that gets us in a good place, market competitively on average, and then doing some of that further refinement with that look of the classification review on that cyclical basis for positions.
I should rephrase my statement. I would like to know who they are. You said you know who they are. Those folks that are falling in that category, what, what, what?
These, these are Schedule B positions, so it's like social psychologists and social workers, also analysts, accountants, specialists in the central office departments. So it's school-based and non-school-based positions in this group.
Okay. And I think this goes to your comment earlier, Chase, where you said we, my question was, do we have a way to monitor our wages regularly for some of those things that I mentioned earlier and that you commented on?
We, yes and no, and we haven't done a good job of it in the past. And this work that we've been doing over the last two and a half years to get us to where our scales need to be to be market competitive, and then to put a system in place so that Dee and her team and Comp and Classification can do this on a ro, on a, on a continuing basis, puts a better system in place. We just haven't had it done on a, overall, I'm not talking about specifically your question, but really just on an ongoing rotating basis, making sure where we need to be on compensation. And so we are moving in that direction.
Is it true, Chase, can I just add in here? Because I was in the corporate world and went into education, and I'm even thinking about county government compared to Fairfax County schools. I think we're willing to do that work, and, and I know Chase is committed to it. I think the opportunity for these gaps between gender are much less in the scale system that we have, because it's not a pay range. The county has a pay range, you could get, even for a group of similarly scaled people, the pay range could go from two to five percent bait, or whatever the number is based on the supervisor. Our system has been based on step plus any market scale adjustments that we've made over time. So the, if we find it, we'll share it, but we've had a historic system that's been built until you come in and you are placed on the step based on your educational attainment and potentially previous years of experience, military service, right, Chase? I mean, there's a few standard things, there's not a way in the year-to-year review where you can get through the interactions with your supervisor a higher rate to the step based on any subjective criteria. Am, am I right about that? And if, if I'm not, let's help.
You are, I mean, there's just, as you said it better than I did, through the step-in grade system, there's less leeway than there is when you have ranges. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't still opportunities for abuse or for misuse, and so we need to be able to have systems in place to check that on a regular basis. And as I said, I don't think those systems have been as built out in the past as we would like them, but by doing some of this groundwork, we're better positioning ourselves to do that going, going forward.
I want to make it clear, I'm not accusing or suggesting that we are having abuse of any sort. I think this is the kind of thing that just happens because of the society we live in. If you watch Sixty Minutes, you know I'm telling the truth. No. So I will, I will end this, you know, without going further and give other people other opportunities, I would say I'm looking forward to, I, as I look back in the notes, I didn't see an analysis where we did a compensation study of our leadership team that is primarily working in Gay House, or, I'd love to see that and how that works out. And I really do believe just fundamentally in supporting the folks that are delivering directly education and making sure that those folks, you know, that's where I would put primarily my investment, or I would support most of our investments. So that's just an overall principle.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Sure, thank you very much for this. I know you all have been working on it for years, and I appreciate that you have adhered to the principle that we had talked about, which was we wanted to stay within ninety-five to a hundred and five percent of the market in all three categories. It looks like that Schedule A is the one that is closest to the market, because that's the one that has the, doesn't have us extending the range at the top. A couple of questions, because the other piece of this is obviously questions about how we encourage a movement of staff in and out of our schools, because one of the things that we want to, I think is really important, is that we have trained professionals that may, you know, corporations will have somebody work in, you know, in one part of an organization, migrate out of that part of the organization to get additional experience, which is kind of what we do here, where we have people come out of the classroom, work on curriculum. But we also don't want to disincent them from going back into the classroom. And so it really is, that's kind of a, looking at the whole experience. And so I would like to hear a little bit about your, your impression of how this scale does or does not do that, primarily in the Schedule C. I also, so I'm going to put all my questions out at the same time, you all know me, so that's the first one. The second one is, you know, you say Schedule C is designed to most closely align with our school-based administrators and what's happening in our buildings. But in Schedule C, and I believe in Schedule B as well, but I may be wrong, we're getting rid of our longevity spots, and that is certainly something that all of our teachers have on the current scale. So I would like to know what the mindset is, that we would have longevity for our teachers and not for others in the, in the scale? And then finally, the, I guess my question is, if we have twenty-one percent of our Schedule B employees are already over a hundred and five percent of the market, and four percent of our Schedule C employees are over the hundred and five percent of the market, why are we extending the top of the market? Just trying to understand, I, I don't have an assessment one way or the other, but it would be helpful to have your perspective on this, because obviously that's a question that is likely to come up. It's also one where, in light of the BA lane discussion, where when we were above the market, we froze it. I just want to make sure that we don't look like we're following on Mrs. Keys-Gamarra's comment, you know, we want to make sure everybody gets treated similarly.
Sure, so I'm going to answer the first two questions and let Michael answer the third, but all my colleagues should chime in as well. And the longevity, the longevity question, that was your second one, that's actually in the plan overall was to eliminate the longevity from all the scales, and so when the teacher scale is fully implemented, it will no longer have the longevity step as well. And so that was one of the principles from back when we started, was that we're removing that hold step as well as longevity step from the top of the scales. And so that's kind of the short answer on that. So the work you're seeing in A, B, and C are just reflective of those other scales as we move to fully implement those as well. You're, you're spot on with your first question about the alignment with the school, and that's something that we actually talked about and thought about, and we looked at this, and we think that these scales do provide more of that inflow and outflow opportunity for staff members to leave a school-based position and seek opportunity at, at one of the central offices and not feel like they are hindering their, their earning potential. And so we did look at that and try to ensure that we were encouraging that, that professional growth both inside the school setting and outside the school setting as we work to serve students in all of our capacities in the school division. And so I don't know how much, I don't have an analysis number by numbers, but that was definitely one of the things that guided some of our thinking, because we have had those conversations with employees of saying, you know what, I'd really like a different experience, but for this reason or that reason, where I look at, I am on the pay scale right now, the job I want would require me to take a, take a pay cut, but it doesn't seem that the responsibilities are that, that different. And so we did have some of those conversations and look at how we could better align those so we make sure that we, we give those opportunities to individuals. And so it was definitely part of that equation. We looked at a number of factors, right? Obviously wanted to be market-driven in that ninety-five to a hundred and five percent, but then also look at those opportunities for individuals that are also in the system. So it was part of our thinking on that piece.
And Chase, if I could add, that's also about organization need. We have some positions where we find that it might be good to have a school-based administrator in a central office position, but those school-based folks wouldn't necessarily want to take that central office position. So there is that focus of what an employee would like to do, but there's also the focus on organizational need, and by aligning these two scales, it will make it easier for us to encourage those folks to take those positions.
So in regards to the, kind of the position matches that exceeded the maxes on B and C, part of this is, again, the challenge of the eight hundred positions and the number of positions we have grouped together on those scales. And so while some may be a little bit over market, again, what we saw for the most part, and which the market study showed, is that on average, more at the minimum were below the market. So to kind of help bring all that, those pieces up, we still move them as a group. And then again, it's that classification work for further refinement to determine if there are jobs over market and what adjustments need to be made to bring those back in line. And at the same side, even doing this, we may still have some positions that are still under the target minimum of ninety-five percent and need a little bit more adjustment or tweaking to refine that further.
But you're actually extending the top of the market when twenty-six percent are above that top of the market already. So that means one in four is already above it. And so that's where I'm a little confused on how you're defining your market. Are you defining your market based on who's in your current pool? Or are you defining the market based on what the market expectation is, what the expectation in the market is?
Sure, and the twenty-six percent, sorry, is, is the position matches, so it's not one in four individuals, it's about the jobs that we had matched to the market. And again, it's, even though they're above market, we can go back now with the classification work, and we have a four percent grade differential between grades, and so if a job needs to be regraded lower, we can take a look at that through that classification work to bring it back within that target of ninety-five to a hundred and five percent for the pay range for that, for the position.
Okay, I, I think I might have more questions on that. And then I would just like to address a comment that you made regarding the, the value of corporate jobs and the benefits given to corporate jobs versus the benefits given to employees of the school system. And I'd like to correct that mindset a bit, because as someone who has come out of corporate and received many stock option packages, if you actually look at the track record for most corporations, the stock option packages really are not as valuable as a defined pension. And so when we, you know, I would be very careful in making it sound like our employees have less of a benefits package, because I think if you did a apples-to-apples, you would find that the benefits package offered by Fairfax County Public Schools, and frankly, Fairfax County Government, is much more robust than you will find in the corporate sector.
Sure, and I, I didn't mean to speak to the value of it, it was just, again, speaking to the challenge of not having all those pieces to make those apples-to-apples comparisons always.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much. First of all, as I was, as I was just simply looking at the scales, and for example, in the C category, clearly you are slowing down the step increases at the upper end, it's only about a thousand dollars-ish between each step, and at the lower end, it's maybe closer to three or four thousand. So you're accelerating, at least in the change, you're accelerating the, the increase at the beginning and decelerating the, the top. So in other words, figuring our, our problem in being competitive in the marketplace is we need to attract people early on and then get them to stay. So it's kind of, we saw the same thing with the teacher scale, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Faster earnings on the front end.
That's right, and slowing it down so that we are not over-market at, at the top. The, in, also in the Schedule C, we jump from each between a two-hundred-nineteen day and a two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract. Who is on what, what titles are under the two-hundred-and-nineteen, and then what titles under the two-hundred-and-sixty?
Yeah, sorry, part of that was a carryover from the school-based administrator pay lane, so those two-nineteens are actually the lanes created for assistant principals, so there aren't any unified scale staff on those in that regard. But we do, everything presented here is twelve-month salaries, and we do have to do conversions for our less than twelve-month support employees that we have in the organization. for our less than 12-month support employees that we have in the organization.
So everybody on a C is a 12-month and everybody on a B is a 12-month. In other words, everybody's on, these are all 12-month.
Roughly. I think we see more of the less than 12-month on some of the Schedule B positions that we have there that are, again, more school-based positions out there. But coordinators and directors, yes, they're working 12 months.
Okay. And then how, how are you dealing with salary and lane, step differentials between, uh, school-based administrators, elementary, middle, and high school? Because I know that within the profession, that gets to be a discussion.
So at, as of now, we've, uh, based on the market study that we did, which again was two and a half years ago, and where it came back was that the vast majority of school districts locally and across the nation differentiate pay for school-based administrators based on that elementary, middle, or junior high and high school concept. And so, uh, the plan that we put forward right now does make those distinctions. However, over the last five months, you're right, there had, or longer than that, but in earnest over the last several months, we've had some, a very rich conversation with some of our administrators about possibly looking at doing something different. And what we've talked to them about is that we're going to continue that work through the summer and through the fall. And so we're open to having that conversation. We've got our friends from ORSE doing some, some research for us and looking at different models and then also looking internally if we think that, you know, maybe we want to try something different and, and blaze a new trail and be the forerunner here in Fairfax for that. So, um, in the future, there might be something that we look at different, but as we look to next year, there will still be that differentiation based on elementary, middle, and high school.
But looking at what seems to be the best long-term plan for differentiate, not differentiate, slightly more middle, whatever.
And honestly, it'd be very premature for me to, to, to speak to that right now because I think that, yeah, there's a lot of interest in looking at it, but I think that we, we need to, we need to do it the right way. And we don't want to just, um, put something out there, uh, as a quick fix. And we've got the administrators on board with that idea of doing it right and so taking that time. Dr. Brubin, sorry.
I just want to say, we, we have had, this issue, by the way, particularly between elementary and middle school, has been going on for almost 20 years. They asked Dan Dominant about it and Dan left a few months later.
Yes.
So it's not been addressed. I'm just telling you to be in the his, I'm being, being the history person is Scott, you're back, you know the history, what are you going to do about it?
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that.
Part of the whole issue right now on the US scale, even to a little bit of Karen's question, is we did face a decision as an organization, trying to get everybody on the new scales and then figure out the classification studies in these subpositions, whether you're above or below market. And were you going to move people to new stuff and at the same time go, oh, you're here, but now you're, you know, we reclassified? Or get everyone on the new scale and then through a cycle, determine where you are to market either above or below? So that's, that's an approach, we've taken approach, get everybody on the new scale and then start to do that work. With, with school-based administrators, I'd want to say one more thing. I, I, I've told them I'm willing to look, but I'm an out-of-the-box person. So when you, when you bring it, we're going to take all the ideas and look. There are a lot of ways you could chop this. You can chop it bi-level, which is the traditional way. You can look at student enrollment. We have elementary schools bigger than some middle schools. We have some bigger than high schools. You could look at FRM. If we want to have an equity lens on what does it mean to be in a, a school with higher poverty and the, uh, the impact of trying to get our leadership to be in those schools when there's challenges associated with that achievement gap, uh, there's mobility. You all asked us about mobility this year. Some have said, we have military children. Should that be a factor or mobility is high? So we're pulling it all in, but we're not ready in the middle of this scale to then pull that out and really have a whole host of other issues that we really haven't deeply researched. So I sort of said, I'll take the input, but guys and gals, I don't feel comfortable bringing a scale this, I feel it's too rushed. I want to do it deliberatively and really look at what other models might be out there. So, uh, I think they know what, there, some of them are like, come on, can't you just do it now? And I'm like, I think we've got to spend more time to be sure we do it right and consider, because there would be winners and losers based on the way we cut it. Right now, it's bi-level and it has been for a long, long time.
Okay. Um, thank you. My last question is, for people coming into the system, what kind of credit do we give now? If we can encourage somebody from a competing school division, uh, where are we with that? How many years of service can we give credit for?
So we don't, um, and I, I understand your question because we have that cap on the teacher scale. Uh, we don't have that necessarily. Uh, when we look on the, on the unified scale, um, you know, we're willing to look at where they are, what their, uh, what their current salary is, their current years of experience that they bring, uh, helps us stay competitive and, and attract, um, employees to the division. And so we don't have a hard and fast rule necessarily, um, on where we'll bring folks in, um, from the, from the outside. Now, as a practice, we do try to, um, be consistent with, if we're looking at somebody coming from the outside, what is it going to take to attract them, but not provide them, um, an amount of money over their current salary that would be inconsistent with what we would give somebody competing from the inside that was taking that promotion, right? We, we want to be fair to our current employees. And so, uh, while we're trying to attract talent, we also want to make sure that we're respecting the individuals that are here. And so there are a number of different factors that go into those considerations when we have those conversations.
So it is somewhat open to negotiation and, but as you say, trying to be consistent with what we would offer to somebody in the inside.
And that goes back to, uh, Ms. Keys-Gamarra question earlier, right? Is, is where some of that comes. And I was going to say that is, once they're in the system, we have better controls in place. It's when we're bringing them to the system, are we bringing them in, um, at compatible, uh, competitive, equitable, and in a, in a fair manner.
And then my last question is that a lot of curriculum writing is done on a stipend basis during the summer. Um, are you looking at that? Are we, are we able to attract teachers over the summer willing to do that work? I mean, kind of, this has nothing to do with the salary scales, but I'm just wondering where we are with that.
No, no, another piece of this is the hourly pay bands. And one thing we need to do is, is we move to these new scales is take a look at those. Um, we do usually let those benefit from any market scale adjustments we apply, so they'll go up year to year in which market scale adjustments are granted. And we have conversations with those program managers who are using those pay bands. So obviously if they came to us and said they're having a problem with teachers for that purpose, we would have certainly evaluated and look at, see if any adjustments need to be made either to that pay band amount or does a different pay band maybe possibly need to be used, an hourly pay band for that work.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much.
This is Schultz.
Let me start with a basic question. When did we do a total compensation study for senior administrators?
I'm, I'm not trying to be too sore or argumentative, but by senior administrators, do you mean LT? Do you mean?
Whoever you put in C or whoever you called the 200 or?
We did it along with the rest of the compensation study and we did that work back in, uh, fall, winter of 2015. And then we revisited it.
So the 200 most senior people in this organization, you have total compensation data for?
Well, this, this does not include, um, leadership team, executive directors, or executive principals. So again, I just want to be clear, clear. So I don't know what you mean by total compensation, Ms. Schultz. I, really, I'm not trying to be.
We go to the slide that says 200 positions, whatever slide that is.
You talk about this one that captured the 850. So again, about 650 of those were the school-based administrators and.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Was everyone in bullet one covered in the compensation study?
Yes, but when we looked at positions on the unified scale, because there are 800 and so positions, we looked at market matches, uh, and used a sample. We didn't go out and benchmark every single individual position on the, on the, on the unified scale.
I'm trying to figure out when the numbers changed, why the information that was posted on April 10th was different than the information that had been presented to us earlier? And if those, if there is total compensation for the people at the top, I don't recall ever seeing a position equivalency. So how was the decision made, what a director three and what size department and what their duties were compared to a, um, assistant principal or compared to an associate principal or compared to a principal? And a principal at Robinson and 4,000 students, I'm sorry, is not equivalent to a, a principal in the school that has less than 2,000 students. So, um, I, I have, I think I have eight or nine assistant principals at Robinson, but I have an associate principal who's the number two. That's different than a subschool assistant principal. Wh- where is the equivalency of what somebody who is handling a, a subschool that has, I don't know, 900 students versus a director at Willow Oaks who does X, Y, and Z? Where is that? Because this shift is sort of, I feel a little bit that this, well, I'll let you answer that.
So not all of that's done. Uh, we're talking about the scales and so we went out and we did the market and looked at that to design the scales. That's what we talked about, the class and compen- uh, compensation work that we're still doing, that we're still looking at exactly what you're talking about. Just because we've designed a scale, does a director three, are they now on Schedule C Lane 10 or is it Schedule C Lane 9? Those are things that we're still working through. And as we go on that continual basis, we'll be able to better slot those positions. That also goes to, uh, Karen Corbett-Sanders' question earlier about the positions that are over the market. Just because we developed the scales, when we take a deeper look at that, that doesn't mean that on Schedule C, they might not be moved to a different lane that puts them within that market range. When we're talking about so many positions, unless we develop an individual pay lane for every single position, we have to do this work over some time. And so that's the work that's ongoing by Dee and Herschel.
I think that's my question then. Why would we implement a new unified scale unless and until you are complete with that reclassification work? I, I, I don't understand. I mean, this is, this is the penultimate cart before the horse. And of, of the 17.9 million, how much dollar-wise is attributed to those 200 people at the top?
There were a couple of questions there. Uh, I think that the first part of it's kind of the chicken and the egg. Do you develop the scales first? Do you do the classification work first? And there are advantages, disadvantages to both. Um, the work's been ongoing, uh, for several years. We originally, um, we originally said that the, the work for the unified scale was going to be completed last summer. It's a huge bite and it wasn't. And as we go into this year, you know, we felt like that for a number of the positions, actually the vast majority were in very good shape, but we also feel like when we have the scales designed, where they are as we do the classification work, we have the room available with the different lanes and different steps in the scale that we can bring those positions into market. And quite frankly, this is never going to be stagnant. It's not designed to be stagnant. It's designed to be reevaluated on a rolling basis every year to make sure that we stay within that. And so even if we'd done it the other way, that wouldn't have meant the work would stopped. It would have just been, okay, we're here. Now we go to the next evolution the next year.
But that's, I mean, I, I appreciate that, but the clarity of what that means now is at best opaque for the people at the top of the scale if that classification, if that reclassification work is not done. And then I think we leave ourselves open and subject to the question of what were the people being paid at what grade? And if you're determining their, if you're in the midst of determining their reclassification, then all of a sudden the fungibility of where they were is pretty significant to where they wind up. And I mean, with all due respect, you professed rather boldly at the beginning of this that, well, only three people in that entire unified Scale C will get more than 8%. I don't know, I don't, if you haven't finished the reclassification work, how do you even know that? I, I, I'm.
Well, that was because I need the question, sorry, Dr. Brubin, I don't want to speak for you, but the, the question was related to with the implementation of the new scale. And as, and the scale design itself does not result in significant increases for individuals on Schedule C with, and it matters how you define significant, with the exception of three individuals that are going to see more than 3%. The implementation of the new scale without the classification work results in an increase of less than 1% for 70% of the people and less than 3% for 98% of the people. And so I understand, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about defining the new parameters of the scale. You're absolutely right about the class and the comp work, but again, that's going to be ongoing. That's going to be more driven by some of the things you're talking about. And there, we're not prepared to share that tonight, but, uh, we could come back at a later meeting and talk about some more of the detail around how we are making those valuations on those classification pieces.
So the, um, I will tell you, the second part of my question, well, before I follow that up, the second part of my question is, how much of the 17.9 million is for the 200 top positions?
We don't have that number broken out at this time.
Is it 20%? Is it 5%? Is it, I mean, you, you don't have any, I mean, not even a ballpark? That's a, that's a pretty.
If we don't have it tonight, we'll, we'll certainly get it. Um, obviously tonight's a work session. We're not voting on any of this.
I know, but I figure that's a pretty, I mean, if we've carved out and we know that there's 200 positions there at the top, I think it's pretty reasonable for us to ask the question.
Listen, a- as you know, there are multiple questions that were asked. We do our best as staff to try to anticipate what the questions are. I think it's something we're going to, it's something I continue to work with the team about trying to anticipate what 12 folks will, um, ask and we'll continue to work to get better, but we'll get an answer.
When did, when did the schedules, when did the unified Schedule C change from the, from the January, the original January presentation?
Sorry, which January present? This past January?
Yeah.
Was that a budget work session?
Yeah. Yeah, when it was originally presented to us.
As far as I know, we haven't presented it, but.
So.
We, we started rolling out this idea of breaking the unified schedule or scale into three schedules, um, last summer, I believe. I mean, we've been talking about moving to this A, B, and C, but we haven't provided any detail, uh, with regard to what those scales were, were looking like until this work session.
Okay. Cause I just saw something on April 10th, you know, and, and that looked to me like something different than we had had presented on this to date. So I, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get my head around the fact of why we would advance, basically accelerate raises under a unified Scale C for the top of the organization without this reclassification work finished. Because I thought when, when you came on, Dr. Brubin, one of our missions with you was to get our handle on the total compensation piece for teachers. The objective was to talk about that sagging swale and for mid-year career, for mid-career teachers from approximately year seven to about 15. That, you know, we were pretty good at the front end and we sort of topped out at the, at the very end of a career, but we had the big swale. And now, all of a sudden, we're talking about, well, we'll get around a reclassification later, but we're just going to go ahead and move the very top administrators. I haven't seen equivalency. We, I haven't even had a conversation about, does a director of whatever, you know, a director 4A or, you know, I see people's titles at the bottom of their, um, emails. I don't even know what a director, you know, 4 is or, and how does that correlate to administrators of buildings? It's one thing to be running, you know, architecture services. It's another thing to be in charge of 1,000 lives. I mean, you know, a, and, and payroll and money and, and, and I don't know, or we have never had a conversation about whether there are actually equivalencies. I mean, there just may be some general, you know, in the, in the career of, you know, being more experienced, you know, you're sort of at the top of your career or whatever. But to try to say that there's an equivalency, but that, let's go ahead and advance the people at the very top of the scale to a unified, um, C, I, 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 I anticipate that this is going to be a major bump in the road. That's what I'm saying, is we are, uh, this, all due difference to how long this has been going on, but we're trying to, and we're not there.
All right. Well, let me, let me share this. All right, well, let me, let me share this. We've had these US scales, ugh, how many years?
Nineties, early nineties.
Yeah. For my career, it's been the same exact scales. So, the transparency here is, yep, we're moving to the new scale, the average is about one percent, and then we're going to start a process of reclassification. Some may find themselves, frankly, move down the scale, some could move up the scale. The, the, the issue here, Ms. Schultz, I think really is, and it is, it's for the board to help us with the budget to go, there's hundreds of positions to reclassify. Whether we're going to wait to get all those done, or who, who goes first, because if you get reclassified, you would be moved to the scale first. And do we want organizationally to start to try to develop that queue of which set of jobs does, or say, look, we've developed a new scale, it's overall based on the market, you're going to move to the scale, only a slight increase, one percent, we're going to do reclassification, the reclassification work could, could move you farther on the scale, it could move you down the scale later. And, and I get your point. I mean, will that cause some organizational friction from folks who went, wow, I got to this new scale, and then ultimately, reclassification brought me farther down it? Um, but I think, you know, you're, you're focused on Schedule C. To me, I'd say if the board doesn't feel, you know, and I get it, hire administrators, there's, there's organizations out here doing things that I don't think necessarily need to be applied to Fairfax. We're not giving leadership team twenty percent raises. I mean, we're, we've not been doing it, aren't doing it. Um, this is about, our US scale folks have waited a long time, just as we've talked about the teacher market, we did teachers first, and we spent the last few years doing it. And I, as superintendent, have accelerated the teacher market one. We had a discussion when I got here, when is the right time to start the US scale? And there was a part of me like, well, gosh, let me just finish. It's time to at least work on getting them on that scale, and then we can figure out the classifications later. There's a perfectly reasonable argument to go, you know what, until all the classifications are done, leave everybody on the US scales as they are. But there was a part of me for the organization, the whole instructional versus support, saying, our folks valued, we're, we're redoing our scales to market, and we're going to put everyone on those scales, and then do reclassification as we get to the different job positions. That's the best way I'd frame it.
So, it, so, for the, for the assertion, 'cause to me, a marker has been thrown, and I want to be super clear about this marker. This one percent raise, this, oh, well, three people, and I don't know who they are, um, are going to get, n- n- um, none are receiving a salary increase of more than eight percent. Do, what is that MSA versus step? Is the MSA on top of this? And then, what about, um, there are other compensatory, um, means that this board has provided, particularly in people who have contracts, that isn't associated with this?
Our folks can answer that.
So, first, remember, th- this is about, to your point, 'cause you're saying there's a marker has been thrown down. This doesn't address most of those pieces. This address, this addresses, as we said from the beginning, the switch to the new scales. All right, it's taking everybody that's on the current two thousand eighteen scale, picking them up and putting them on the proposed scale.
So, the MSA and the step is on top of moving them?
And so, yes, it's in, it's, it's in the budget, right? It's in the budget, the proposed budget, that there's a...
It took us a lo, a, I don't know how long I've been talking, but that, we've arrived. We've finally arrived at the point that I was trying to make, which is picking up top administrators and moving them before reclassification done, and where they potentially land is prior to any decision that we make with regard to an MSA and a step. So, the increase that you're seeing here is pre-MSA and pre-step. So, you could be talking about a lot more for the people at the top on this, on this scale, on this unified C. That's my point.
Okay. Well, we can share, we, we know what the MSA is, we know what the average step is. I mean, I mean, those are things that we've shared before. This is about the scales, and we're sharing with the differences to move to the scale.
This, I will just tell you, this to me looks like front-loading, um, um, pay raises for people at the top, and when we haven't necessarily, um, done the full investment for the teacher scale, I think this is problematic. That's the point that I'm making.
And I, I think to clarify, we're looking at people who are at the lowest end of the current scale. So, we're not talking about people who are at the top end of the scale. We're talking about those people who are at the lower end of the current scale. If you go back to the slide that shows...
Quadrants?
This, uh, keep going forward. Keep going, one more, th- this one right here. So, it's those individuals, where we say three employees, as we move people from the old scale to the current scale, we have some people hanging out in the lower end of this scale.
It's the new car.
Well, I don't know what that was. We have some folks hanging out at the lower end of the scale, and since we will no longer have that lower end of the scale, those employees who are in that grayish area, they're going to move to the first dark, dark square where we say the new unified scale begins. So, we've got some folks on the current unified scale who, again, who are on the lower end of the scale, and for whatever reason they're there, as they were hired in Fairfax County, they didn't come in and move to a higher portion of the scale. They were, they're currently living at that lower end of the scale. When we create the new scale, those pay lanes will no longer be there, and so they're just going to leapfrog to that first, that first box or that first step on the new scale.
But they leapfrog, and if, if they're at the low, if they're at the, if they're at the lowest end of the scale, that's just for whatever cu- current title they currently hold. There are, is movement within their titles, and so, the next time they move to the next title, they're going to get another pay raise.
If, if they move to another title, i- i- it's not necessarily that those individuals will move to a different title.
I, I think...
That's something we're looking at as well, Ms. Schultz.
I think it's, I, I mean, I'm trying not to be too opaque here, but it took us an awful long time to get to where I was saying, which is, I, I do not think, and you almost went there, you, I was hoping that you were going to finish with the, with the C. If we're not ready for the C, let's take care of the teachers, let's take care of the, the support staff, and if we have to hold C, um, because we're not finished with the realignment of all of the positions, and we can't adequately understand, um, I, I mean, we can't even, at this late date, I mean, my goodness, it is, we're getting to be the end of April, and, and nobody sitting here can say what the seventeen point nine million is with respect to the two hundred top positions. That is a very basic question. I, I just, I would have thought that it would be more clear what we're doing with the top of the organization, when we're trying to be particularly sensitive to and, and remediate the middle years when we're having a teach, a national teacher shortage. This is not where I wanted the focus to be, and unfortunately, it's wound up being so.
The board can have this discussion. This is exactly, this is a work session, the work session's on the scales, it's not on total compensation. We can give you the average total compensation for any position. We can, we can give you that. This, this is about the scales. When is the right time? The board has been spending multiple years working on the teacher scale, we're not there yet. So, a legitimate question, when does the board want to do anything on the US scales? You could argue until it's all done, don't want to do it. Um, I don't know that I would, you know, this would be for the board separating Schedule C from Schedule B from Schedule A, where to draw the line on that, or we'll do two of the three? I mean, I think those are board questions. Um, I think we have to be thoughtful about, we have to be thoughtful about the messages we're sending in the organization. Part of my message is, we're family, we're trying to move to market-based compensation for all of our folks. Our teachers are first, the most, majority of the budget, fifty-three millions for teachers, seventeen million is for these US scales. So, and then the job classification adds the time, do we wait for all those classifications and then do it with the scale and do it all at once? And I hear you saying you think it should wait and do it all at one time instead of doing the scale first.
I hear you, and with all due respect, we're not family. We are a board that is governing, and you are superintendent of a three billion dollar organization, and these are employees, and we have to treat them fairly, but we also have to be honest and say, this isn't family, these are employees, and we need to be professional in the way in which we go about classifying employees and, and acknowledging where the priorities are when we have, I mean, um, Mr. Hill has thrown down the gauntlet that, look, next year's coming, and I forget who asked it, but somebody asked a very good question, maybe it was you, Karen, who said, what happens, or maybe it was you, maybe it was you, Karen, one of the Karen, of what happens next year is that, it, it, there is a constraint coming, and you cannot, um, enter into the constraint when the constraint happens, you have to prepare now. And we, we have to have a, a fulsome discussion about what this means, and just to say, well, they get fifty-three million, you get seventeen million, it all worked out, mm, it, that, that's not a fulsome discussion, in my opinion.
I, 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 I...
I yield, I realize, I mean, if, if we'd gotten a little quicker to where I was going, it wouldn't have been as hard.
Thank you, Mrs. Schultz, that's a really excellent, uh, and thought-provoking topic that you've brought up. Um, but we are moving on to Ms. Polczek.
Um, thank you. I, I will ask a couple, uh, questions, a, a little bit going in the vein, but I guess wondering, A, if you could, because this is not my field, give us a little bit of how maybe our process compares to similar institutions going through this process, private-public sector, right? Is this generally what's done when a large organization, um, changes scales? I guess it's kind of my big broad question.
Well, I, I, I think ideally, eh, eh, organizations, um, you know, best practice, whether it's, it's private or public, it's something that it's an ongoing conversation that you're looking at on an annual basis that's cyclical, and you have a cycle set up. We don't have that.
Sure, but I guess my question is, when, when organizations are where we are, where that hasn't been there, and at some point, they need to catch up and get there. Is there best practice of doing it in this process, or doing what Ms. Schultz has recommended?
You have to pick what your, what your drivers are, what your guiding principles are, and when we started this process, now two and a half or almost three years ago, it was, we want to, we want to, those are the voices in my head, I'm sorry. We wanted to be, uh, market-driven, and so, that was one of those pieces that, that led our work. Also, we want to provide faster career earnings. And so, a lot of this tracks back to where we started, and so, as we get further and further away from that market study, or those, those discussions early on, I understand how we come back and have some of these things, but a lot of this was set in motion two springs ago, right? Uh, and so, y- you have to start with that philosophy, and we started with the one of, of looking at creating market-driven scales that were ninety-five to one hundred five percent of the market.
Okay, so, that, that's good to know. And I guess my question, 'cause I, I know we started there, and we actually started there before my time, and before your time, and many of our times. Um, and now, you know, my feeling, I think what we're getting at with our teacher scales is, what do we do especially for retention, also for recruitment, um, but especially for retaining our best employees, knowing, understanding market being a pretty large factor, but right, not the only factor? So, I guess my question, if we were to say, okay, we have this information, and we want to, we have the market research, uh, and now we want to look at, based on our budget, what are the best steps forward, and maybe what's most critical, and what are priorities, um, looking at recruitment and retention, uh, especially of our employees?
I, I mean, I think that we're on track. I think Dr. Breran made some great suggestions when he got here, and a way for us to expedite moving to where we wanted to be on the teacher scale. But alongside that, we also need to be conscious that there are other individuals that work in the organization, and we brought those individuals along. We promised them, um, implementation last spring, because we wanted to take more time, we didn't get there. And so, we come to that, and we make this investment. We've had the budget placeholder of the seventeen point nine million dollars that's there to provide this increase, and we look at these individuals, the on-average increase for our folks on the unified scale is below where we are for our teachers. Our focus is on teachers, those having direct impact on our students in the organization, and as we look and we move up, we see those major increases for our teachers, followed by two point three percent, two point three percent for our Schedule A and our Schedule B employees, and then to one point one as we go up the chain inside the organization. And so, as you look at it, we have met those priorities, and we've been able to do it in a way that we focus on providing our teachers those increases to bring them up to market without forgetting about our other employees that are working in other capacities. And so, uh, with Dr. Breran expediting that teacher scale, it's put us in this position where we can serve all of those ends.
And, and I guess a, a more direct question is, are we seeing, um, the same kinds of concerns, and more studies coming out, how important the principal is, and, and for me, living wage for our employees? Are we seeing similar trends, or are you fearing some very immediate impact, um, on retention and on recruitment?
Yes, it's, it's very difficult for us to recruit individuals on Schedule B and Schedule C. As we look at where we're competing, we, that's where we look at both the general market and also the school market, because, um, we're not necessarily just targeting individuals that are working in school systems. And so, as we look at people to bring in and, and specialist roles in, in the budget office, or in HR, or in tech for Mary Beth, it's very difficult. And so, to stay competitive, uh, to Ms. Cor- Corbett Sanders' point, we have to put all of those things on the table about the other benefits you get by coming to work for Fairfax County. But if we can't compete on a salary basis, it puts us in a very, very bad position when we try to recruit people in the organization.
Um, thank you. A, a couple of qu- questions. Is it possible to get, do you, have you gathered information? I know, um, you know, we've heard anecdotally, um, teaching positions that we may have had a hundred applicants in the past, and now you may have a handful. Um, is there data like that for these schedules of decreased applications?
We, I mean, not, anecdotally, I know some of ours that are really hard to recruit, but we could look back, but I mean, I, I, I don't want to give one example and say, we're having this crisis across the board because some positions we can fill immediately. There are other vacancies that stay vacant for six, seven, eight, nine months because we can't find individuals, um, that, that are willing to come for the compensation that we offer.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, and I want to just close with, I also, um, share, Ms. Karen Kizikmar, especially talking about that fuzzy negotiating, um, for incoming, um, people and, and looking at people's salaries. I know that's one of the, the things that really increases the, the gap, the salary gap. So, for future work, if we could, I would, um, want to, for us to look at that as a system, as what we're, what we're doing or aren't doing, that may be adding to, uh, agenda or other salary gaps as well. And then, um, living wage, I guess we're looking at fourteen fifty, the county may up it, I know MIT says it's sixteen eighty per adult. Um, it's quite an expensive county, so any information you have of where we are, um, and where we may go? I guess what we're seeing with the Schedule A, I assume, I mean, I'm looking, starting salaries about twenty-eight thousand a year, um, which is probably poverty level, uh, for Fairfax County? So, um, any information you have on...
Yeah, no, actually, we did go ahead and take a look proactively, just in terms of knowing if we hit the fourteen fifty, and then we're chasing fourteen eighty-three, we even look, that could be about a half million to try and catch up to that, to the fourteen eighty-three.
Half a million, okay. Um, and would it be possible just to know if we were to go up to the sixteen eighty, which I think is what MIT is saying, just so we know kind of what that gap would be, uh, in the future?
It'd be big, we can take a look at it.
Okay, thank you so much.
What, sixteen?
I think sixteen eighty is what MIT says for just one adult, um, not even with children, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. I, I would, I would not like the headline to leave this room that, um, you know, staff is asking us to pad the salaries of people at the top before we have finished taking care of our teachers. I don't see that that's what we're doing here. I think we live in an area that where, that is high cost, high average salary, high average household income, we do need to figure out how to take care of everybody. And, um, it probably doesn't make sense to just wait until all the pieces fall into place. Um, but I wanted to ask Dr. Breran for just a little bit of clarity for my own sake about that, that balancing that you do, right, that we have to do between, you know, do we move forward, um, on the, on the scales, uh, before we've gotten the, the rest of the work done? What is, what is the risk? Um, if, eh, what is the risk of doing it the way you have proposed to do it? Um, that if we, if we wait for the reclassification, sort of, we do that as step two? Um, I, what, I guess what I worry about more is that we will be sort of making promises to people and then have to pull back, or we'll end up making a shift where we have to work really hard to keep people whole, you know, and it costs us money just to do that? Um, I don't know, I mean, how far down the road have you thought about that? I don't know, I mean, how far down the road have you thought about that?
Well, Chase, you want to take first? I, I mean, I have some comments, but go ahead and make your comments, and I'll follow.
Sure. I think you really answered the question, Pat. I mean, when we had this conversation, we know that the complication is that we could be pulling individuals through the knothole twice, for lack of a better expression on that. You set them up, they think they're going to get one thing, we go back and classify the position, and it doesn't come out that way. Now, just like other positions, even if we reclassify, we wouldn't reduce somebody's salary, right? That's, that's been something that this board has been very passionate about, that we don't want to see people go backwards. But it could set up that, that different expectation. And so, as I look at the, as the team looked at the concerns, that's what we're trying to be very conscious of, and, and as we communicate this, if we go forward, letting people know, this is the new scale. You're being moved to the step closest to where you are, but know that there's classification work that is going to be ongoing.
So, we, we debated this in leadership team. I came in to a multi-year look at the market. We had started, what I, when I came in, hey, where are we? We've, we started it with teachers. We weren't all the way through, what do we need to do? I wanted to aggressively move to finish the teacher, and we really, really moved this year in this budget. When I interviewed for the job, and when I went around and started to meet with schools and different groups of people, I had a lot of people feel that our US scale, or support, mostly their support people, felt like they'd been ignored for a long time, and that they had a contribution to the community. And honestly, in October, it's my second or third month, did I want to include family? And listen, I know this is a business. And, you know, I grew up in a family, it was, I grew up in a family that knew, they knew I, they, I knew they loved me, and it was also clear at 18, you need to go out and finish college in four years and come back. I came back home for two weeks, bought a car, and left and had a job, and I never went back. So, I believe in family, family with accountability. Keeping great people is creating a culture that you want to be in, because you believe those people believe in you. Our folks on the US scales feel like, when is anybody going to get around to me? And that's the part of, do we want to parcel out the US scale?
One, two, three. One, two.
Man, that is something else, I got to tell you. I've been in a lot of...
One, two, three. Go alone.
I've been in a lot of interesting situations in my life, and this is one of them. Whether to start to parcel out and then begin to divide, what, we'll do two of the scales, we won't do you, because you make more. I mean, I, I respect that, and you guys are raising issues that should be raised. That's part of what a board does. I wasn't ready to start to single out. To me, my message the first year, people matter. I'm going to invest in people, and I'm going to have an opportunity to bring salary increases for everyone, and a chance to get the scales moving for everyone. And, you know, part again of the difficulty, if Chase could go, look, I could get 800 done in the next six weeks, we really want to have that problem, you could move to the new scale and the classification. So, and we did talk about that. What happens, these people get on the new scale, and then they end up, I mean, we really faced it, the board faced this with our teachers. We didn't figure out our plan as well about communicating what happens when you are over that market. So, obviously, we're going to communicate upfront with folks as we move to the scale, what we're doing, based on what the board ultimately decides. But I guess the bottom line for me was, I wanted to come in and set the tone that everybody matters in the organization, and the workaround scales needs to get almost finished. Teachers are a huge group, major money, and we took the big, again, of a 90 million and additional dollars, 53 million was for teachers. Who are our largest number of employees? But were we, how much longer was I going to wait on the US scale? And I felt like, you know what? My, my, my belief was, it's time to get to the scale, and then we can work through the classification work later. But it's a judgment call. I mean, superintendents have to make judgments. You all can review these judgments, it's a budget-related judgment, some are operational, this is budget, and have a different opinion. I respect that. But I, I felt like the message, we're all in, and we're doing this work to get everybody to a market-based scale was important.
Well, and I would just say, I appreciate that the person making those judgment calls does think of this as family. I do. I think we have to care about people. In the HR world, we're talking about people, not talking about things. And I think it's important to remember that. And so, I mean, especially, I think, at a time like this, when we have apparently a good partnership on the county side, and, you know, they so far have been willing to help us do this work. I think, I think they understand, board supervisors understands, from my talking to them, that we have been very sensible in the way we've looked at this, and we have put all our eggs so far in the teacher basket, and that if we're, I, it seems to me, we need to get questions, and we need to continue, I think we need to make these judgments after we have a few more answers. But that everybody's working very hard to make sure that other positions also get a serious look, and it's time that we did that.
If I could, Ms. Heinz, Dr. Ramey or Mr. Smith, could you check me with, the county had finished doing their, had the county finished doing their market adjustments, or are they still in process? Do you, do you remember off the top of your head? Maybe I'll get that as a, as a follow-up. My sense of it was, when I arrived, that a lot of that work, the county had already completed. When I first met with Ed Long, he goes, Scott, this work, we've done that, we're already done with that. And I have to say that that was a factor in my own head, like, I want to get the school system in that same place at the county. And then, they've made some tweaks, they've gone back and done reclassifications, and then, of course, they have scale ranges, they have ranges based on the positions. So, it is a little different than ours. But I think that was a part of my thinking too, and I'll, I'll, I'll get the appropriate follow-up.
All right, thank you. I think we've now gone through all of our board members who wanted to ask questions, that we're now going to turn it over to Ms. Evans, co-meeting manager, and then I'll ask a final question or two.
I believe Mr. Moon has a, has one go back. Yeah, we have one go back. Thank you. I appreciate this work, and I, I do think it's important that we appreciate and compensate our support employees. Our support employees are, are critical to our organization as well. So, thank you for this work. I had a question, I'm going to start with A, I'm going to start with Schedule A. So, I want to make sure I understand what's, what's happening at the bottom of the scale. We have 134 employees who are at the bottom. Does that mean that if, I've, I've been going back and forth between the current scale and the new scale, and, and actually, that is a, a next step that I'm going to ask for. I think it would be useful to have the current side by side with the, the new, so we don't have to flip back and forth. So, if you look at the, the current scale, does that mean, and I, I believe probably those 134 employees, are, are these primarily custodians? Are these, because I'm looking at, is that who, is that primarily who we're talking about here?
On Schedule A.
On Schedule A, I'm, I'm looking at the 134 employees.
Custodian, custodian.
Custodians, office assistants.
But do we have office assistants at the, at the step one?
Oh, they've just been Schedule A.
Yeah, these are folks in kind of steps one and two, and you're right, 61 of those are custodians.
61, so half of these are custodians, okay. So, and are we saying then that these folks will go from 27,073 to 29,861? Is that what's?
In this case, yes, because this is the minimum grade and step for Schedule A, which is grade five currently for custodians.
Okay, so, so, so anybody at 27,07 will immediately go to 29,861, and we're, and half of those are custodians, okay. I just wanted to make sure I, I understood that. And going back to Ms. Polczek's question.
Can I clarify? Sorry.
Sure.
Real quick, those folks are actually step two, so they're actually a little bit above that current 27, so they're probably around 28 or so. So, they're actually a little bit closer already to that 29.
The custodians are at step two?
Yep.
Both custodian ones and custodian, one and two are both at step, okay, all right. And so, with the, the living wage, is anybody on Schedule A currently below living wage? Is this going, is this change going to?
Yeah, it's, it's part of those custodians.
And so, so will this, how, how many? So, we will now have no one in, on Schedule A who is below living wage?
Correct. If we can have the market scale adjustment, that's targeting that 1450, they'll be above the living, they'll be meeting that 1450 living wage prior to the, any update to it.
Okay, so we will have taken care of that. And I think we, we now have taken care of a lot of those below the living wage. I think we still have a few food service workers perhaps, but that may be about. So, I think that's, that's an important piece of what we're doing here, and I, and I applaud doing that. So, going to be, again, under the same, by the same token, we have 30 that are at the bottom, and does that mean, and these are social workers, psychologists, we have folks who, among those 30, who will go from 51,7 to 57? Is that true? I'm just looking at the old.
No, so again, this is minimum grade and step for Schedule B, which is starting at the current US grade 20. So, we still, of those 30, some of them are other, on other grades, such as US 21, unified scale grade 22, 23, 24, et cetera. So, only a handful that are on that current grade 20 are kind of captured in this minimum grade, minimum step comparison here.
Okay. So, so they're, okay. All right. And then, going to C, those three, let's talk about the three that are below. And I'm looking at, do we know what the, the lowest salary of those three employees is now? I mean, the, the lowest on the, you say nobody's at the 72, 178, correct? Which is on the scale. It's on the scale, but you're saying nobody's actually there?
Correct. No one's actually there.
No one's actually there. So, so where is the actual?
Quick, the first starting point here is actually going to be grade six of a 27, which is 88,027.
88,027. And so, that individual will go immediately to 94,5?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, you know, I think that, I, I see Mrs. Schultz's point about making sure we're, we know what we're doing on, in all of these cases. Well, let's, well, let's look at the top. Whoever is at 155 currently, they're not immediately going to 163, correct? They are going to whatever the next step is.
Next closest dollar.
And so, they would go to the, it would take them three years to get to 163, correct? Because we've added three steps?
Correct. They could actually fall a little bit lower than that, just based on how the range has shifted.
Okay, but it would take them at least three years? Is that correct?
I could check on, I don't know off the top of my head.
Or, it's for, have we added, have we added four steps on C? Or I thought we'd added three? Have we added three or four steps on C?
We've, sorry, we've shifted this, again, we've shifted the steps from 20 total down to 15. So, that starting point is kind of what drops off steps on the front end, but we've also altered the step increases a little bit, so that kind of shifts how the rest of the steps play out over the rest of that 15. So, it's not a direct one-to-one match in terms of steps being added or dropped, or on the backend.
Well, let's go to, let's go to page eight, slide 18. That, that's, what I'm looking at is at the top.
Right, and this was really just illustrative purposes, to show kind of the shift in how the steps change overall in terms of the number of steps.
Oh, it's just about the number. It's about the number, okay. So, if you're at 155, how long will it take you to get to 163?
Give me one moment. It looks like it'd be about four more steps to get to that max.
Four more steps?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, I, I think one thing that we, we do want to make sure we're, we're not conveying to people that, that there are folks going immediately from 155 to 163, because that's, no one is doing that, correct?
Correct. And that was, yes, I think that's correct. And that's really one of the differences between how we placed individuals on the teacher scale, and how we're placing individuals on the unified scale. To keep step integrity with our teachers, they moved from the step they were on to the concurrent step on the same scale. So, that's why some of our, our teachers automatically saw six, seven, $8,000 increases, because they went from step to step. With the unified scale, we're moving folks from their current salary to the step closest to that current salary.
Right.
So, that's the difference in the way that it's going on. And, and so, that's one of those discussion pieces that we have to make sure that we communicate, so people don't feel like they're not being valued, or that their value's being diminished, because you might have been on step 17, and on the new scale, you might be on step 13, right? And simply because it's not a decline in your salary, the fact that we equate so much of our value with where we are on the step, we have to be careful how we communicate that. But, sorry, that's a long answer to say yes, you're exactly right.
Well, well, I appreciate that, and so, I, I did have the one next step, but with that, I'm, I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We have now two go backs, so if you do want to do a go back, please raise your hand, let us know, and we'll add you to the list. My questions actually are mostly related to Schedule B. And, and, and I'm starting from the, just from the, the description of Schedule B, it sweeps in a very diverse group of employees. HR specialists, technical specialists, financial specialists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, a huge range. In the process of developing the new scale, did you take into account those very distinct sub-markets for different employees when you were, when you were creating where they would go in the new scale?
What? Yeah, I'm not sure we have the same answer. I, I think that speaks to Ms. Schultz's point, is we're conscious that, and looking at that in terms of when we did this, but that'll also be something that'll be further teased out when we do some of that classification work.
Okay, so, so one of the good news points at the start of the school year was that you had fewer unfilled positions, but I recall that they were in a, sort of dominated by certain areas. Does this new scale, I mean, I don't know if those, those individual employees fell within the Schedule B, but do you think this will help avoid those problems in, when it's in its implementation, to, to be able to hire more effectively in those areas that we've had trouble in the past?
Absolutely. We, we do, we think that it'll be able to provide more consistent and market-competitive salaries, going away from a unified scale that was the same for 32 grades, to be able to break it out, to look at these and do the classification work, we, we most definitely think it'll help us in our recruitment.
Okay, because as I, and I haven't spent a, a lot of time with the, the crosswalk, but I see, for example, an after-school specialist is a Schedule B1, same as a speech pathologist. Are they, in terms of hiring, are they the same? In terms of, you know, the demand, or where are we at in their individual marketplace? And, and I wonder whether or not we, we need to at least think about having a dynamic, some sort of dynamic ability to adjust, to, to make sure that we pull in, you know, those people that we are struggling to find, and, and, because I know, as you've said, we've got to recruit, retain the ones we want, and then retire them. But if we can't, if we can't recruit them, then we're, we're in this fix where we've got gaps in our staffing.
So, I, so, sorry, you're looking at Dr. Brerbrand, but I'll, I'll start, if you don't mind, Dr. Brerbrand, but I, I think you're right, Mr. Wilson, and, and all honesty, like the conversation on this table, and we talked about in, in January in Goal III, our efforts were around recruitment, and have been dominated by looking at filling our gaps with teachers. And we need to do a better job of expanding our recruitment footprint for other positions outside the organization. So, it's definitely something that we're going to continue to look at. But as we also talked about in Goal III, our next phase, because we've done some focus on recruitment and hiring, is to look at the retention pieces, which I think also comes that differentiation. Because we look at retention and what it takes, it directly feeds into how do we recruit for some of these positions?
And so, I guess the final question within the Schedule B, do you, are, are you comfortable that you've completed the transition from the unified scale and the US grades to the new, the new scale at this point? Or do you expect to move some pieces around still?
No, I think we, I, I think we definitely expect that there will be some, some movement. No, I think we, I, I think we definitely expect that there will be some, some movement. Just like with some of the positions on, on Schedule C, as we do some of the classification work, as we look at that, that, that will be part of what we do over the next year.
Okay. I think as a next step, we should have, you know, any, any sort of significant changes to that would be high, be helpful to highlight for the board and to explain sort of from an HR perspective, why you've made changes in those ways.
Sure, sure.
Okay. On Schedule C, and I, I think we've talked a lot about this, so I won't, I won't ask a lot of questions. But I, I was curious, there, you mentioned 650 of the 850 are, are school-based administrators. Does that mean that they're, they have their office in a school?
For the most part, yeah. They hold school administrator licenses and hold positions, Director of Student Services, Assistant Principals, Principal. So they are the administrator teams at the schools, yes.
So those people are all in the schools. And so. I guess then that leaves 200. And I'm just trying to figure out where are they sitting? Physically each day, where do they, where do they go and put their coat up?
Central office, so the central office buildings, yeah.
So that's Gate House?
Will Oak's and Dunloring, a few other centers across the division.
Okay. And, and. With 200 of those folks, does, do we have enough capacity? Are we seating them all? Are we, we have extra space? Or what, what's our status in terms of, I'm just trying to gauge, this seems like a huge building to me. So it seems like you could fit 200 in here, but.
Well, there's more than just Schedule C folks.
Yeah, I understand. The Schedule C folks.
I think it would depend what office, I think, I think you depend what office, well, yeah, what, which office you're talking to about whether or not that department has enough space. But that's more of a Jeff and Marty question, but they do a nice job working with the different offices to configure what they need.
Yeah, I'm, and I, and I apologize, I being a little bit flip in terms of space usage.
Sure.
You know, lawyers sometimes have big offices too. But, but I just, I think that having us, and this is just echoing some of the earlier comments, having us understand what we're talking about Schedule C, who are we talking about, where are they located, and, and how are we making decisions with regards to their compensation? It's very important. Okay. And with that, now I have two go-backs. Mr. Moon?
Well, thank you. I, I have a couple of questions. First one, sorry that I'm belaboring on this, just a small number of employees, 30 people, 28 to 38 percent, because I need to be able to explain to my constituents, if they ask me questions, whether I understand. The, Mr. Drager, the earlier example you gave us from going through 88 to 94, that's not one of those three, correct? Because that's only going up by 6,000, which is about 7%. Yeah, 7%, 7.5%. So it must be somebody else, right? So those, my assumption was those may be APs or those may be principals or.
No.
Who are they?
There is no one that, that is getting a 33% raise. It's talking about the design of the scale. I'm looking at step one, which was well below market. And then now step one becoming at about.
Okay, so, so one more time, one more time. On slide number 17, when it says in the print, in third bullet, raises the minimum pay by 28 to 38 percent, and then parentheses, affecting no more than three employees who are moving from the lower end of the current scale to the new minimum. But, Dr. Ramey, you are saying that there is no one. If there is a no, why don't you say no one?
I, I think it's just, it's, I think it's misworded in, in all honesty. And that's, and that's a problem.
Okay, I would like to have, I would like to have a clear clarification, because it has been pretty fuzzy to me. Because I've been trying to figure out where, hearing two different things. So.
And it's created.
If you need to, you need to, if you need to go back and just double-check, 200 people and another 650 school-based administrators, because we are dealing with 850 altogether for Schedule C. And whether there are three or there is none. So that I could give a really clear responses to community request, if there is. Okay, thank you. With that said, you know, this question may go to our budget folks. You know, just going back to our advertised budget. As far as compensation items are concerned, there are basically four items. One is. Teacher scale enhancement, 53.1. Non-teacher scale enhancement, 17.9. Recurring cost for step on BA lanes, 1.3. Now, my question goes to the fourth one. Step increase for all eligible employees, 43.9. That's all, including teachers and non-teachers, everybody, which is about 90% of our, of our employees generally, correct? So do I understand that we do not have separate market scale adjustment? Like a usual, what you talk about MSA, whether it's a half a percent or 1%, when in olden days, you know, we were able to put 2%. We don't have that separately in our budget. It's all the market.
So the way we developed the budget, Mr. Moon, this year is that we included market as part of the scale implementation.
That was my understanding. Because instead of calling it market scale adjustment, it's basically market study-based adjustment, changing the whole scale. So if we use 1% as olden days MSA, 1%, 1%, we could, you know, one times we're tough, we didn't put any, we even froze the steps. You know, but we used to be able to put 1% to market scale adjustment. Step plus COLA, COLA, 1% COLA or MSA, 1%. That 1.1% for Schedule C is just 0.1% higher than 1%. Correct? I'm just wanting to understand that. For, for, for teachers. Want that 1.1% is point, 0.1% above that. If we were to put 1% market scale adjustments. Changing scale, because when you, when you do market scale adjustments, the whole scale moves by, by 1%. If we did 1%, the whole scale would move by 1%. In this one, we're not moving everybody by 1%, but on the average, for Schedule C, for all 850 folks, it's going to go up by 1.1%. Am I understanding correctly? On the average?
For the scale?
For the scale.
Yes.
For the, I'm talking about scale. Okay. Okay. For teachers. They have 53.1%. 53.1 million, not percent. 53.1 million. What's the percentage increase if there were to be converted to MSA or COLA?
So what we said for the $53 million, the scale implementation on average for teachers was 3.86%.
Okay, so 3.8% we are giving to the teachers on the average, and 1.1% for non-teacher scale employees.
Well, you're just top Schedule C.
Schedule C.
Schedule, Schedule C, Schedule C. I'm sorry. Okay. I think I have a much clearer understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, Mrs. Schultz.
I'm glad that my go-back is after Ms. Evans and Mr. Moon. So I, I think I figured out part of the problem in this presentation. If we can go to, if we can go back down to. Slide 18. The, the problem is for each of these scales, or each of the, the A, B, and C, this slide version for each one, there is no distribution. There should have been, you know, the, the bubble or scatter, the scattergram that goes with this to demonstrate where the people are on this particular scale along that graph. So there is no understanding of where they are distributed. And, and, and I don't mean to interpret, but this is a big sticking point with all of us, these three employees. And Ms. Evans, you were trying to go there. I think that what they're trying to say is the bottom of that scale, whatever that was, the three people aren't at the bottom of where the scale is, but the bottom is the bottom because that's where the bottom is. They're further up somewhere, but we don't know where. We don't have any idea the dis, the dis, well, we don't really.
They're about 8% below the base.
But, that, I'm sorry. With all due respect, can we go back to the slide that I want? Because that's not it. That doesn't, that is not a distribution. You've chunked people by quartiles. This isn't a quartile, so there, there's absolutely no statistical correlation between those two slides. What would hap, what would be better is to have a slide that follows this, that shows 850 people are distributed along that bottom line. In, in what way? Are they largely in the middle? Do you have?
So I'm hearing a next step here.
Do, yeah, do you have 700, you know, you, you've thrown 76 and 38% as if it correlates to what, with what Mr. Moon was trying to get to, which is, oh, there's 28 to 30% minimum. No, there's not because there's no one, because there's no one at the bottom of the scale. So where are those three employees and how close are they? The other end of the scale is what bothers me, is of the 850 people, how many are in that, how many are in that gray? I don't know. And how many top out? And where are they now? So there, there is a lack of clarity as to where people fall along in each of these. And I think that would be somewhat helpful is, is understanding that. Mr. Wilson, I think was trying to get to, you know, in, just in the time since some of us have been on the board, you know, the state has created, you know, one, another unfunded mandate of requiring a special ed certification in their content area. And so you have harder to fill positions. But the question is, are those, are those as difficult for us as the harder to retain? And I think the retention rates in some of these areas, in some of these categories, I mean, we have principals.
God bless you.
Who've been around forever. We don't lose principals. We don't, I mean, we're not shedding principals. You know, that's the whole reason we concentrated on the middle of the teacher's scale. That's what we were shedding. And so understanding the attrition rate and where we put this be, becomes important for, for us to understand. And the, the certifications that we were talking about the other night in terms of masters, the certifications don't even need to be, for, for masters, don't even need to be in content area, correct? So, you know, the retaining a master's, you know, doesn't become particularly difficult because they're not drawn. Nobody's saying, well, I need, you know, Loudon is not poaching our master's candidates with content-specific knowledge here, because there is no requirement for the masters to even be in the content area of what the teachers have. So the harder to hire versus the, the, what's the retention rate becomes part of the narrative if we're looking to hire teachers, if you have mid-year career switchers, where they fall in all of this. And I don't understand whether it's A, B, or, well, A is not really it. But, but B or C becomes that significant part. But I want to have clarity here. Is the 17.9 million for these 850?
No, it's for the entire. It's.
How many peop, how many people does the 17.9 million cover?
It'd be about 5,000. I think we had it on the earlier slide.
5,088.
But all on B and C or?
A, B, and C.
So there's people in A that are covered by the 17.9 that were not covered in the 15 point, or in the 53.8? Okay. Yeah, I think we need to understand the distribution of that 17.9 across the, the, the scales.
And I had written that down as a next step.
Right. Because the 4%, the thing that I'm very bothered by on slide, if you could take us to the bottom of slide 16, the 4% of position matches in Schedule C. Well, that's 850 positions, 4%. That's 34 positions are north of 105%. So what, what's happening with those? If, if we move those, if we reclassify those and move those at all, and then layer an MSA in a step on top of that, you are going to be taking those positions into the stratosphere. And I, I don't have an understanding from any of this presentation where that is, because I don't understand along those, those little bars at the bottom, what the distribution of people is and the potential. It's also a potential for growth. If most of them are clustered around the middle of that bar, that shows a potential for growth. You understand what? Okay.
Every presentation is an opportunity to try to communicate as clearly as we can with the board. Every presentation. We use the feedback. You've given us good feedback today about how to show the distribution of the scales. I think the other thing that's getting lost, what is the total compensation salary increase by different groups of people? Teachers, administrators, custodian? So it's clear to you who's getting what. And the bottom line in this budget is the people getting the biggest raises are our teachers. But we've got to better show that to you as you make final decisions on the budget. And we will work to do that and bring you some additional contextual information and some visual slides that we talked about as we were doing student success, that help make it easier for you as policymakers and budget approvers to make sure you know where the money is going, who it's going to, and what the distribution is like.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And the final person is Ms. Strauss, and then we're going to go to next steps.
Thank you. Just very quickly, how many years has it been since we've done a market study and a salary scale adjustment? It's been a very long time. 10 years, 15 years?
Yeah, again, the Unified Scale was implemented in the 90s, that, the last time.
Yes, and I remember that. That's what I was going to think. That was part of that, yes. And part of the thinking all those years ago, because we had a NESCIL and got rid of it, is that by putting it all, and yeah, and I remember that was a long debate, by putting it all together, it does help within particularly the administrators, the educators, the support personnel who actually support instruction by and large. It provides, I think, more growth and opportunity to move back and forth within educators who are actually administrators within the school, those who are in other offices and move back and forth. It helps to sort of grow and solidify those positions better because they tend to be, many of them very, very tied to the, the, the day-to-day instructional program. Because I remember when we made that decision. So it's been a very long time. And I am glad that we are finally getting back to doing this. And it is always hard to understand the difference between a scale study and then actual compensation as it applies to each person, because they are two different looks. So certainly a scattergram helps too, so we, because we had to kind of struggle to get there with teachers as well. We spent many work sessions trying to get to that point. But again, the bottom line is that our teachers, classroom teachers, daily classroom teachers will get the largest raises. The smallest will be sort of at the administrative end. And then at the very bottom, those who are at the very lowest of our pay scales will get a bump. And that's very important because we've, have been concerned about minimum wage for a long time. So I support this study and I do think the scattergram will help the understanding. But knowing that an adjustment in scale is different than when you actually place people on it. And I do think the overall value system, slowing it down at the top, because that isn't really where we need it, moving it further along at, at the lower ends is very important. So I'm, I'm glad we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Okay, so can we go to next steps? Okay, if you see your next steps up there, if you could. Take a look. Let's make it bigger, yeah?
Definitely bigger.
Mr. Wilson, I ordered four pairs of reading glasses earlier today.
Okay, so. This key's got my number one, has your name in number two, so.
No, that helps us. No.
No. We'll put it in the hopper. It may not be by next Friday that we have it done. Right.
I guess we should vote on each.
Okay, so look at pay across the organization to ensure gender equity. That's a more of a long-term ask, you're saying, but, but it looks okay the way it's written. That captures?
We should raise our hands for it.
Okay, yeah, so everybody agree to number one? Okay, very good. And the second one, Ms. Kiesgau, do compensation study of senior administrators slash LT. Now, maybe we, do we need to refine that a little bit?
Could you?
So, so maybe add complete the compensation, compensation study, or complete A compensation study. I'm not sure, have we started one?
We have, but, you know, kind of following the theme tonight, as a leadership team, or Dr. Brerban and Dr. Lockard and Marty and I talked about it, we've left that to last because, you know, those are the folks at the top of the organization. And so we focused on our other employees first. But yes, we have started looking at that.
So I guess that's some more of another long, longer-term item. The third bullet, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
It's actually-
Number two?
Oh, yeah, let's go for number two.
Oh, yeah, we got to vote on number two? Okay. That looks like a majority.
Number three is actually, please provide an explanation of how this proposal will facilitate slash encourage the movement of staff in and out of our schools to, to have, to, essentially, we want our best professionals to spend a bit of time in gatehouse and in those coordinator and curriculum development positions, but we want them also to be wanting to go back into the school system. And if it's a situation where there is an overcompensation, you know, or the compensation actually encourages people to stay out of the school.
Well, I think what you're looking for, because this is some, this is a big concern that I've had, as well as the question of best practice, is leaving people to languish, you know, in a building does not help the building, it doesn't help their professional development. And so the que- the question for me is, what, what is the best practice for, you know?
Encouraging the-
You know, I wouldn't even say encouraging, just what is the best practice for, you know, time spent in a building and how we're going to, and, you know, the principal pool is one thing, you know, and it may begin to address it, but that's only like one narrow.
So Ms. Corbett Sanders, I, I don't, I think what you're getting at, though, is we don't want to discourage people from going back to the schools.
Right.
Right. We don't want them to come to gatehouse and say, I can't, you know.
It's too cushy. I, I get compensated better by staying out of the class.
I think we might need to reword it to really make it understandable when we, when we see it down the road, so to not discourage a return to the school, something like that. So, you know.
That's why I said facilitate and encourage.
Movement back, back into-
Our buildings.
Back into schools. Incentivized.
Close, yeah.
We'll be glad to look at it. I, I can't go with the irony. I just have to do this with this board, seeing Michael here. 25 years ago, I sat in class with a, another person named Drager, who shared that the way we had our scales actually was to stay in school, that no one wanted to do the central office. So it's a very interesting discussion in that it was, the scales were set up originally in Fairfax not to get out of the school, to stay in. The best opportunities were there or in school-based administration. So what's the right balance, really? This is what this question's getting at. What's the right balance to both as part of professional growth to do a stint in the central office, but have an equal opportunity to get back in after a few years? One of the issues, is there stagnation sometimes in school leadership or in our schools? Is there stagnation sometimes in the central office where we've had somebody in that and a more corporate look? Is that there's a rotation of folks through, a strategic rotation of folks through certain jobs that actually make them better either in the central office or back in our schools? And I think that's part of where I see that question for our staff to look at.
That's precisely the concern, is that our current structure gets people to go into one place instead. And that is not healthy for an organization.
So I think that's a-
Unless, Dr. Ramey, I'm off with what I've just shared, their understanding, let me know.
I'm on with you, but I think that the conversation relates broader than the pay scale, right? This is about philosophical leadership and how we put people there. So tying it only to our pay scales, I think shortchanges the conversation, is all I was going to say.
Which is why I put explanation versus, you know, just a pay scale.
Okay, about, and, and so with the discussion then on number three, are we ready to vote on it?
Really would love best practice in there. I mean, because just, I mean, tying it to a best practice anchors it to-
I agree.
Something.
We all agree.
Include best practice. Thank you.
Can we vote again?
Okay, let's vote again. There we go. Thank you. All right, and Ms. Corbett Sanders?
And this was actually more than just the longevity. It's that ensure that we're having parity in how we are approaching these scales as we have in the teacher scales. Because it seems like we're actually not having parity. So we want to make sure we do. With the approach, that, you know, for example, in the teacher scales, there's longevity, there, you know, the, those that are already making above market, there was the concept that we would not then just increase the market, but rather, no, all I'm saying is, if we're doing it here, we need to do it with our teachers. If we're not doing it with our teachers, then we shouldn't be doing it here. So, and the biggest example I see is where we said that the market was, for the BA lanes was X, and therefore we had exceeded the market, so we decided to freeze it. Well, if we are having parts of this scale that are 20% above the market, then we probably shouldn't be increasing the scale to accommodate it. We should just recognize it, so.
So Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you asking for them to review what is being proposed as the new scales and, and sort of take that look at it so to make sure that there aren't pockets that aren't maybe encouraging longevity?
That we're, no, that we are having, if we have used certain approaches with our teachers, then we need to use the same approaches for the unified scales.
Okay, so perhaps maybe just saying to review scales for parity with implementation of teacher scales? Is that sort of what you're going for? Yeah, not in terms of dollars, but, yeah. Maybe it's a philosophical parity. Parity in approach, there you go.
The unified scale.
Okay. Okay. All right, can we vote on that? Okay, great. Ms. Schultz, you have number five?
In addition to, for the top 200 positions, the, it's the distribution of the 17 million, 17.9 million across the unified scales.
You want it A, B, and C or something else?
Well, yeah. Did you want the breakout of the top 200 plus the distribution cause A, B, C?
17.9 million, the distribution across A, B, and C unified scales and, and for the top 200 positions.
Five million for A, it's three million for B.
Pie chart. Are we ready to vote on that? All right, excellent. Number six, Ms. Balltrick.
Yeah, for this one, if, I know you, you gave it to us, but I'd like it in writing just the cost to move to the proposed new living wage, which was, I think, 14-
1483.
1483. And then if there are other calculations, because I don't know how that county comes across it, but that's the main one of 1483. He has, no, this is 1450.
It hits the current target of 1450, but they've advertised an updated living wage of 1483 to go in effect next year.
Well, I think that's number, so, and if there's another-
You can find a lot of different numbers to compare to, so.
Correction for, okay. And let's do 1680, just, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote on that? Okay, number seven, that's Ms. Evans.
Yeah, I, I think you understand what I'm, I basically just want to be able to see what somebody gets now, what they're going to get with the future scale. Yeah.
Okay, yes, very good. All right, and number eight, this was really if changes within specific occupations or jobs, it's to be highlighted.
My understanding was, as we do the classification work going forward, where we see that there's, those are the major changes you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and it's really not even so much that I care about specific jobs. I just want to make sure that we've, that you've, we are in a position to be able to hire and retain and then retain the best and then retire those ones that we want under the scale and that we've been sort of nuanced enough to, to adjust to where the market has been.
Sorry, yeah, I guess we have to, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Wilson, I thought you were trying to understand, like, the specific areas, like, where we were losing, are, are they, the, the classifications where we're having problems as opposed to not having classify, is that not, did I misunderstand what you were saying?
Yes, so I, I think, I think this captures what it was that I wanted, which was basically under the US scale, which is from the 90s, have there been historically positions under the old scale that we've had difficulty making hires and filling and retaining? And when we translate that into the new scale B, you know, have we gone through and done a backwards look to say, hey, we really need to treat this position differently now? And, and I would like to see that information.
Are you talking about reclassification? I understood what you said. I'm not sure that sentence says that, but that's fine, as long as everybody understands.
Significant changes, do you mean, do you mean reclassifications?
Yeah, and that, and I guess when you say, she asked me if that means reclassifications, I guess if it's classifying to a different level, then it would be a reclassification in those cases. I mean, I think that is what would happen, right? You wouldn't necessarily-
Yeah, there you go. That's better. Okay.
And, and Dr. Ramey, just a quick question. So my, and I think is a great question. For the future, is this something that you will be reviewing annually if something, one class suddenly really needs to be bumped up?
Yes, it is something ongoing. So I'm just, you know, sitting here and reflecting on Mr. Wilson's question. I think this is be something that we might bring to the board annually as we do our classification review each year, saying, we've, we've reviewed these 20% of our jobs this year. Here are the major classification changes we see. And it would be just an annual report that we bring to the board every year, so we keep the board up to date on where those are.
Thank you.
Okay, and now number nine, Mr. Moon?
Oh, I didn't vote, the vote on number eight?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for the number nine, I don't need number of script-based measures, but I just wanted to have, you know, clarity, clarification on slide number three when it says there are three employees with 28 to 38%.
I think my 10 will take care of that.
I want to keep it as is.
We could vote on number nine?
Okay.
Okay, that's majority, good.
So I'd like to make that a little bit more specific, 10. A scatter graph and a bubble graph, distribution of employees across the scale on slides 10, 13, and 18. Because that will show you the concentration of where they are, as well as the distribution of them along that line. And I, I think that becomes imperative for us to understand the impact.
We just need some, I was about to ask Michael, we need some clarity on what do you mean by bubble graph? We just want to make sure that we're providing the right information.
I'll, I'll be happy to provide that offline. That's a, that's a, that's a standard graph. So, so the number of people that are in it, it's the bigger the bubble.
Okay.
You know, so if there are a lot of people that are in, in that, you know, in the middle of it, the bubble will be larger. If the outliers will have little tiny bubbles. I'm not ma- this is a known statistical analysis tool.
Dr. Ramey, we'll go over bubble graph dynamics after, after this, after the work session's over.
Don't mean bubble gum. So, so just, just before we do this, I would like to ask, is, is, is this easily done? I mean, I, I see, I see the, the need for C because I, you know, we had a lot of questions about Schedule C. So you, you can just put it into a graph without it being a lot of extra work?
Yeah, we have the employee distribution by grade steps. I think it will be easy. We'll report back.
I think we've shared a norm too, that I want that staff to speak up if they know right off the top, or as we get into it, if we need to come back and go, look, we can get you the scatter graph, but the bubble graphs three more weeks. I, I'm just, just for a point of discussion that we would.
Just for clarity for my colleagues, if you, if you work in Excel, you can take any data in Excel and all you do is drop a graph. It just converts, it just converts a table.
I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate difficulties with getting these graphs.
All right, so as written, Ms. Schultz, are you ready, the finalist? Okay, can we vote on, Ms. Schultz?
Yeah.
We're voting on number 10, folks. Number, voting on number 10. Okay, thank you. And now number 11, Ms. Schultz.
Send that to Chase.
Provide attrition rate for each type of position. Does that-
This is just a tip, so we can track where the attrition is.
All good.
All right, so let's vote on number 11.
Wait, hold on, wait, wait, this, this one's a little more difficult. So Dr. Brerban asked me to speak up. First off, I'm signed up for an Excel class, so we'll, we'll take care of that. But more to the point-
Your staff should be taking the Excel class.
More, more to the point, we haven't tracked it, I mean, you're talking about attrition rates on the unified scale. I'll have to work with my team to see, but this might be more of a long-term thing. We don't have it readily available like we did when we provided the attrition rate for teachers and even administrators. It's just not as, with 850 positions, it's more difficult to track a little bit.
Well, if you could roll it up by, I mean, general, I mean, generally, do you not know, like, your administrators, your principals, I mean, do you not know general?
That's what I think, if we, the, the further we roll it up, the easier it becomes, but by individual job type.
I'd rather get a first pass earlier, and then if I want a deeper dive, I can, we can follow up more. But I think you ought to give it the old college track, the old K through 12 try.
So, Ms. Schultz, are you talking about on, on A, B, and C schedules or?
You know what? I defer to them to be able to do the first pass to the best of their ability, and if there's more questions, we could follow up afterwards.
Can I ask, is, is this basically the same as vacancy rates for, for jobs?
No, this is like, like, like losing employees. So we attrit out-
I'm just going to say vacancy might be easier to look at than, but anyone.
No, I, I want to know, so there's a hard to fill, which is hard to hire, like, maybe subject matter expertise, special ed certification, et cetera. But then there's also, who are we losing? Where, where are the attrition rates by, by, by category?
Okay, so as written, anything else, Ms.?
No, we're just talking through how we think.
All right, let's vote on this last one. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so then.
All right, folks, we, we didn't quite scale on schedule. So before we turn to the second portion of this work session, I think we should take a, a short break. How about five minutes?
Okay. When I, when I begin it, I'll just share it.
Holding at least a bachelor's degree. However, the data does also show that the Fairfax County Public School pay is at or slightly below market for retirees serving as substitute teachers. When we rank order retiree pay for short-term and long-term assignments within the Northern Virginia market group, we again see that Fairfax County Public Schools is at the market average for short-term assignment pay and is slightly below average for the long-term assignment pay. Please note that within the previously defined Northern Virginia market, FCPS and Prince William County offer a differentiated pay rate for retiree subs. Prince William's differentiated pay is only for long-term assignments. In addition to Fairfax County Public Schools and Prince William County, when we're looking at the larger comparator market as defined in our, in slide three, Manassas City, Montgomery County, and Prince George's County also offer a differentiated pay rate for the retiree subs. The chart on this slide summarizes four key pieces of data over a three-year period. The average number of subrequests per day, the total number of substitute teachers in our pool, the average number of days worked per substitute, and the overall fill rate. The data collected is comprised of information that spans a period of September 1st through February 28th of each year so that we had comparable comparison timeframes and data sets. The data shows the following: the average number of requests per day have increased over the three-year period. The size of our subpool has also decreased over that same timeframe. There may be a number of reasons that our subpool is decreasing in size. Two factors likely impacting here are a very strong economy and the ongoing teacher shortage. Schools within the division are hiring qualified individuals out of our subpool into classroom positions as teachers and instructional assistants. One additional note of interest: the decrease in the size of the subpool was greater from last year to this year rather than, I'm sorry. The decrease in the size of the subpool was greater from last year to this year compared to the decrease in the 1516 to 1617 school year when we did make an adjustment to the pay rates for substitute teachers. The number of days worked by substitutes in the pool has increased over the past three years. On average, our subs are working seven more days this year than they were last school year. Fill rates this year are equal to the last, to last year's at 93%. A note of interest: a nearby school district that will remain unnamed, on the whole, pays substitutes more than Fairfax County Public Schools does, but has an average fill rate of 85%, which is a whole eight percent lower than ours. This graphic compares the composition of our subpool over a three-year period. The areas in blue on each bar represent the number of retiree subs, and the areas in red represent the number of non-retiree subs. As previously stated, our pool continues to shrink in size. Please be aware of the fact that the size of our pool fluctuates on a daily basis. In addition to individuals exiting the pool on a daily basis due to resignation, the substitute teacher office team works hard to host biweekly orientation sessions to add new subs to the pool. On average, 50 to 70 individuals attend our biweekly orientation session. The team carefully monitors applications as they're coming in, and as the demand increases, the need for additional orientation sessions, additional sessions are added to ensure that we don't have a waitlist of individuals. We do want to get folks into the pool as expeditiously as possible. The team continues to work hard to bring additional qualified individuals into the pool. However, a good economy with very low unemployment impacts our ability to recruit and retain individuals for temporary roles. According to the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor and Statistics, the February unemployment rate for Virginia was at 3.3%, and the unemployment rate here in Fairfax County was its lowest since 2008 at 2.6%. The graph on this slide compares the number of days worked by our substitutes over a three-year period. The blue portion of the bar again represents our retiree subs, and the red portion represents days worked by our non-retiree subs. On average, our substitute teachers are working more days this year compared with each of the previous two years. However, I would like to note that our retiree subs did fill 1% fewer jobs this year when we compare it with where they stood last year. The graph on this slide illustrates the number of substitute requests over a three-year period. Since the 2015-2016 school year, requests are up 16% to the tune of about 17,000 requests, but our fill rate is only down 4%. Despite a significant increase in the demand for coverage, our fill rates have stabilized from last year to this year due to the fact that individuals in our subpool are working more days. The problem that we need to really focus on tackling is controlling or reducing the overall number of requests. Here we can see the fill rates by day of the week for our current school year. The blue bars represent the total number of requests for the corresponding day of the week. The red bar represents the total of, number of filled subjobs for that corresponding day of the week. The data shows that fill rates are lowest at 90% on Fridays. The number of requests for Fridays outpace any other day of the week. The data also shows that fill rates on Mondays are second lowest at 92%. While the overall number of requests on Mondays that are, are at the lowest for the week, almost 8% of our requests on Mondays, requests for coverage on Mondays come in within two hours of the start of the assignment, creating an extremely short timeline for securing coverage. Here you'll find information that shows leave usage by type of leave for the current school year. In order to obtain reliable data, the information contained in this graph was pulled from our workforce management system. The information in that system is verified by supervisors, so we do know that these were the specific purposes for the type of leave that was reported. Since this data shows actual time work, it corresponds with the bars on the previous chart under the filled request section. One data point highlighted on this slide which supports taking the path of focusing on reducing the number of leave requests is the fact that personal leave requests increased by approximately 150% on Fridays. The work around substitutes and trying to improve our fill rate continues and will be ongoing as illustrated by the bullets in this slide. As noted in the third bullet, the team and HR is pulling together a work group comprised of current teachers, school-based administrators, and retired teachers serving as substitutes to advance the conversation and to work toward identifying viable solutions to correct this current problem. And we've already begun those conversations and have held the first meeting with that particular work group. Additional information will be presented to the school board to discuss the recommendations of this work group. One final thought that I would like to leave the group with is that as we continue to see an increase in the number of substitute requests, no matter what our rate of pay, until we address the problem of the increased demand, we aren't going to make significant headway in seeing improved fill rates. There are two appendices that are a part of this presentation. The first is an appendice that indicates the current subrates within FCPS, highlighted in yellow, and it compares it with other hourly pay rates of pay. And the second appendice is a chart that provides an overview of the local market, providing current rates of pay for each of those school divisions based upon a number of factors. And with that, I will open things up to questions and conversation.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you for being succinct, and I have Ms. Hines first, followed by Ms. Schultz and Mr. Moon.
Okay, hi, thank, just some questions. You mentioned that you have a, an example of another district that has its substitute to fill rate was about 85%, even though they pay more.
Correct.
Do we have, I was, that's not in these slides, right?
It's not.
Okay, because I was just wondering if that's available somewhere, and if we did the same, did you only do it for that one district?
We did just for that one district, and I'll be honest with you, other districts are shy about sharing that information. And so when we did make that phone call, they did ask that we not share the name of the district.
Okay, so it would be hard to get that data for all of them, so we could, yeah, okay. All right, got it. And I was looking through the budget questions, but only for this year, maybe we've asked it before, like what the cost would be, you know, in this budget if we wanted to do it to raise the retiree or previous teacher pay for long-term subbing to get it halfway to average, which I think, if I'm reading this right, would be an additional $7 an hour? Because if you look at slide three, I'm looking at the regional average, regional market average. You look all the way, that's slide three, is it?
It is, yes.
Okay, so all the way to the right, that's retiree or previous current teacher license long-term. Because that's the one thing I do hear from folks is, you know, we have, the principals love having these teachers who have stayed in the area, and they'll come do long-term jobs for them. And that $14 a day less, you know, that, it's not a little bit of money when you add it up over time. So to go, to get halfway to that difference would be $7. And have we asked the budget question about what that would cost? If not, could I ask?
Ms. Hines, I just want to make sure that I understand. So are you asking if we increase the hourly rate or the daily rate by a total of $7?
Yes.
But just for the retirees?
Just for retirees for long-term.
For long-term.
Yeah, I'm sorry, retirees or previous or current teacher license, that category on the right.
Alice, do you remember when we, when we did the long-term pay, did we have it broken out by day-to-day sub and long-term subs? Because if it's $14 halfway, right?
Yeah.
I mean, do we know what the budget cut was? That would be a rough.
Oh, I can tell you what the budget cut was. It was, we originally saved about $2.3 million in the budget cut, and we restored a portion of it, but not to get back to the previous retiree rate, and we restored about .3 million. So to get back to where we were is $2 million overall. But that, that reduction was a combination of an adjustment to short-term as well as the retirees. So if you're just talking about that piece, long-term for retiree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, long-term, thank you. If it's not too much trouble.
Yeah, no, no, it's not.
And no hurry, but, yeah, okay. As a, good, thank you. And then also looking at the way Arlington does it, and I think that's in a later slide where they, they do it kind of in a graduated way. You get short-term pay, and then after a certain time, you get longer-term pay. If, is that something we're thinking about doing? Do we think that it would save us money and, I mean, I guess it, I don't know. Were we thinking about it? Should we price that out as well?
I think everything's on the table for consideration. Ultimately, I'm not sure that it would save us any money. I don't believe there, and I don't have hard data to give you to support this, but anecdotally from my experience and observation, typically our long-term assignments are going to outlast that middle tier, and so we're going to wind up paying the higher rate. And most divisions or most districts, once you hit that higher rate, they're going to go back and pay you for all that time prior to that rate change for the higher amount as well. And so that's something, if we do go down that path, we'd want to delineate whether or not we'd be in a position to retroact the pay difference to the beginning of the assignment.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would like us to just keep that in the mix as a way of maybe keeping our retirees, you know, in, in the market to help us out, maybe, and spend a little less money. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So a couple of things. On this slide, you say that it's 1423 and 1533 an hour. I'm trying to understand that versus the slide where we say it's 100 and, what is it, $153 a day and 167? It isn't the same, because it's a seven-and-a-half-hour day, correct?
So, yeah, on slide three, we have, for Fairfax County Public Schools, we took the 9961 for the non-degreed folks, we rounded it to the nearest whole dollar at 100.
Okay. But if you take, but just simply, if you go all the way to the right, if you go to the license, the retirees, which is, I think, what a lot of us are concerned about.
Okay.
153 divided by seven-and-a-half is 2040 an hour. And 167 is 2227 an hour.
So our current retiree daily rate?
My math had it calculating seven hours, is that correct?
Seven hours is the number of hours that we pay.
Seven hours, not seven and a half for substitutes.
It's seven hours.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, so seven hours. So this has been, and I've, I've tangentially brought this up before, and I'm going to bring it up again. This is why I think we ought to have a budget by building. Because I think that the principals in the building know best what they need, and I think there ought to be a range of substitutes. I think it ought to be scaled much more nuanced than this, because a teacher for third grade is going to be very, very different than a teacher for BC Calculus. And if you need a teacher for BC Calculus, you want a retired calculus teacher who knows and can keep that, that classroom moving ahead. And a, and a, and a classroom that's a physics classroom that needs a long-term sub is entirely different than an English class that needs a sub for two days. And I think that we've got to compensate and bring back our retired teachers to keep, you know, because really, student achievement's at the, at the core of this. Now, on the flip side, and I think that, Dr. Ramey, you were going there, is we got to find a way to mitigate these expenses. And can we go to, please, slide 11? I just want to point out for my colleagues, when I talk about data visualization, this is exactly what I mean. You now understand where the problem is, you understand the nuanced nature of the problem, where within the problem, the magnitude of the scale of the problem is. This, this is fantastic. We should be getting this for all kinds of things, discipline and all kinds of other things. But if you look at this and we see, okay, Fridays are at 150% increase, and it's very interesting, the other days, maybe there's a little blip on Monday, I can't tell because there's not data points, data labels. But how do, how would you propose, and I'm, this is an extemporaneous, you know, ask, so you may not be able to answer, but how would you propose when somebody possesses leave, they have the right to leave as a part of their contract, the judicious use of that leave, like, oh, you're allowed to have leave, but no, 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 you're not allowed to have leave on Fridays? So how do you anticipate mitigating the expense of the leave by direct, like, how would you, how are you suggesting we potentially harness this? Because this may be, we may be able to pay people more by the redistribution of where we spend the money, of how the money is spent. Not so much that we need more money, but we need to redirect the money to where we want it to go.
So I think that that's a discussion that we want to start tonight, then come back, but we also need some guidance from the board on that, because the restricted use of leave on certain dates is something that's done by a number of districts. And it's something that has utilized before holidays, before other breaks to, to keep staff from taking those days. But that's also a philosophical decision of the district to go forward and do that. So that would definitely be one, but.
So, so would something like, if you're going to have leave on a Friday, you have to have, you know, you have to request it a month in advance, or something like, like, I mean, where?
Sure, there's a, there's a number, you know, I've, I've seen it where the division caps it at the percentage of teachers that can take leave on a day. So you don't put any restrictions on saying you can't do it, but we're only going to allow 7% of teachers to take personal leave. And then it's first come, first served, and the system's set up to reject it when it's put in, when it hits that cap. I mean, there are a variety of different ways to.
And I think I saw later in this presentation, so there's already a roundtable starting on this. So I think that the advanced communication, so this, this is my support of this. One, mitigating costs is paramount, but doing it in collaboration with, not only, and this is the one thing I want to make sure of, not only the teacher organizations, but we have more teachers not in a union than in a union. So facilitating, you know, people's participation kind of across the board, and edging towards that, because I know when we tried to do that with the calendar, well, all kinds of chaos ensued with the calendar, but trying to do it by fiat, you're not going to get buy-in. But I think that if we tie it to, look, if we're able to do this, you know, it's an if-then statement, it's a basic like Koval or Pascal coding, you know, if this, then that. And if we frame it in that, then I think that this is, becomes very, very helpful.
Mr. Moon?
Okay, fill rate, Monday's the worst, Friday's worst, Friday.
Friday's the worst and Monday follows.
And then Monday. So whether it's a 90%, or 92%, or 95%, when there are classes without substitutes, then what happens? Is a building administrator coming in? Or do they combine classes? What happens?
There are a variety of different things that building administrators do to ensure that there's coverage. Sometimes that may mean that they're stepping out of their office to provide coverage. It may mean combining classes, it may mean pulling other individuals that don't have specific classroom responsibilities, such as resource teachers, into a classroom to.
So when resource teachers, when they are supposed to be doing something else, such as, let's say, planning, or supposed to have a meeting, and they have to go in and do it, do they get extra stipend for doing that, or they just not do it out of good heart?
They do not get an extra stipend, no?
And for administrators generally, I assume that miniaturist pay is higher than teachers' and substitute teachers, obviously. And they go in and do provide the coverage. They may not be the best to use the resources, correct?
I would agree, yes.
Okay, so with that in mind, I mean, it is good that we are having a conversation with teachers to see whether there's a better way to do this, but at the same time, when you do that, when there are, you know, if we ever put restrictions on their use of personal, personal leave, then that should be uniformly applied, not just to teachers, but outside the school buildings as well, correct? Would you, would you agree with that?
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. If, if we're going to look at, relooking at our leave usage and how employees are allowed to use leave, it, it needs to be broadly applied, but it also needs to be done in a way that ample heads-up is given that we're going to make a change to the way we utilize leave in the division.
Okay, yes.
And if I might add, when we talk about the restricting leave, and I've shared this in front of several principal groups, and so I'm not speaking out of school here, but I think that we have a cultural issue around leave with our administrators as well. Our administrators have the ability to deny leave at this time, but there's this notion that teachers have the, the right to have their leave. And because our administrators are previous former teachers, there's, again, this cultural notion that, oh, well, I can't deny your leave, if you want to take leave, I have to give it to you. So while we would want to also consider restricting that leave as a system, I think it's also changing that culture within our administrators to help them understand that you have the ability currently to say, no, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to approve that leave.
Okay. And just a couple more questions. I mean, I don't, I do not expect, you know, 100% fill rate all the time, but seeing, you know, without coverage for up to 10% on a given, on a certain day, that's way too high not to provide, you know, right for instruction to our students in the classroom. So with that said, is it, would it be advisable for us to consider even, I think this is something Mrs. Schultz might have alluded, that differentiated pay on a day, may, you know, on a day like a Friday, there is a higher unfilled rate, then maybe we provide more pay for Fri. than Wed.?
So, Mr. Moon, if I could, we're, we're starting the work. We wanted to really, we had this debate and decided, let's just bring the problem, let's let board members react. Frankly, I think there's going to be a menu of strategies that we bring to you. They could be around pay, they can be around leave, they can be around central office support for schools that have needs when someone's out. Actually, Bud Spillane 25 years ago had central office people in as substitutes, so, I mean.
Didn't work.
So I want to bring a whole menu back to the board, but today, getting your comments, some of you are interested on the pay, the leave, what are the concerns if you did leave, but administrator, this helps us bring you a better menu when we go ahead and come back to say, hey, here's how we would want to attack the problem. But we wanted to bring you the problem and the information tonight to just kind of begin this conversation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dr. Pregrin. I would love to see the fill rate to go up to what, 98, 99%? Thank you.
Ms. Palchek, I have Ms. Palchek to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Kiesgmar.
Thank you. A couple of very quick requests for this. The first one would be on that slide, I believe 16, where we have those charts, because I was sitting here calculating, then realized the information was on the first charts. If you could add for the second column, for the long-term assignments, the daily rates as well. For Fairfax County, I think we have the daily rate for short-term, but not for long-term. That would be really helpful. Thank you. And then I guess another quick one is, I, while I agree with Ms. Schultz, I really like the colors and the way graph on chart 11 is set up. One quick thing about the colors is on Friday, the, and the way that we're using that bright red or burgundy, whatever color that is, for personal leave, I feel really makes it stand out and even makes it seem a lot bigger, larger in size, especially compared to sick leave and some of the others. So I don't know if there's a way to make it a more neutral color compared to the others, so we're not saying personal leave is a huge problem.
But we, we are saying that personally it is a huge problem. So I, I mean, it, so.
So if that's what you want to say, but the sick leave is there as well, right?
I understand your saying about the color palette, I get that, but I don't, we are saying that the use of personal leave is a huge problem.
Okay, that, I mean, I just, but, right, it is a problem, but it's not the only factor, and I just, I just, I want us to be more honest in the way we're kind of displaying, not that it's dishonest, but relatively speaking, that would be helpful. The other question is, so I guess I'm having a hard time from this presentation, understanding the challenges or what we're looking at in long-term versus the short-term substitutes. So the Monday and Friday issue, that's more of a short-term need. I guess if we could get more information on long-term needs and how those have compared to the past, because I, I know when we were making the initial changes to the rates, that was a big part of the conversation. And I don't know if we want to break, we can break it down the way Arlington has it, just to see 1 to 10 days, up to 20 and above 20, how we are in requests for leave and filling those, that those leave positions compared to other areas, because that's where we have the biggest impact to our students. Is that something that can, that you have, or that would take some time to gather that information?
Well, we'll see what we can do. I mean, we've, part of the challenge is that we're pulling data from multiple systems, and so the time management system is newer, so we may be able to do something more for the past year while we've had the time management in place. It may be more of a challenge going back to the previous years.
In the working group, is that being addressed, or just the short-term?
Both are being addressed in the working group. You know, we're looking very globally at the, the fill rates, and in the long and short-term needs all filter back into a need, and so ultimately, we want to figure out how we can motivate folks to, to work in those, those areas. What I can tell you is I did just a very brief look at the, the fill, not the fill rates, but the distribution of retirees versus non-retirees working in long and short-term assignments. Our retirees are working in long-term. Our retirees are working, uh, in long-term assignments at about the fourteen to fifteen percent mark, and they make up about seventeen percent of our pool. Um, and they're working at about the fourteen or fifteen percent mark for the short-term assignments as well. And again, they make up seventeen percent of our pool.
That hasn't, that's about the same.
Yeah.
And do you know if that's changed in the past?
That, that I don't know, and that's where we're gonna have some difficulty getting some historical data. Uh, we can do it now because we do have that robust time and attendance system that we're utilizing.
Okay, yeah, so it would just be great, I guess, when you come to us in that future work session and with the working group to ensure, which, with as much data as you have available, um, is there a difference between the two and what are the priorities?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Um, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and, um, a special thank you to Dr. Ramey. I know this is a, a long night, and, uh, you have a little one waiting anxiously at home, and who does not sleep, so, uh, thank you. Um, this really is, i- it's an interesting problem that we're faced with because it's really a demand problem more than a supply problem. And so we do have to address it as a demand problem and what has, um, has accelerated the demand problem. It's my understanding that much of this, um, if we look at the trend line, wa- can be attributed to increased number of personal days that we gave to our staff, um, as a way of compensating them because we were not meeting their, um, needs salary-wise. So I do think that part of this conversation should be, as we have made significant infusion into salaries to make the market competitive, I would hope that this would be part of the discussion about, you know, we've, we've been doing that, now we need a little assistance in getting the demand for personal days under control, especially on Fridays. Um, so I, I would hope that that would be part of our discussion. Um, I am glad that Dr. Brabran mentioned the concept of, um, using staff from elsewhere to satisfy some of the demand, and the reason I think it's important is slightly different, which is, goes back to my conversation about compensation and actually creating an environment where people remember that we are a student-focused system. And so having, being a student-focused system, we should be urging all of our, uh, folks that have a, uh, background in teaching. I'm not suggesting people that aren't trained teachers, um, to provide a certain amount of days a year where they are back in the classroom. And so I would hope that we would look at that. And another area which we could look at, um, which I would suggest is something that is very traditional in the corporate environment, is actually to do a, um, a leave buyback. So that it actually may be more efficient to do that buyback and, um, create an environment where we're focused at, focused on the, um, student experience. And so that's really where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kies.
Address the demand. Kies-Gamar?
I'm just gonna, I think some of these are suggestions that came out of discussions that happened, but my primary concern is that however we deal with leave, that we do so in a consistent manner. I don't believe that it should be, uh, left up to principals when you have things handled one, in one school differently than another school. I think, um, that's part of the problem, or maybe part of the problem. Um, I also would like to make sure that we start a conversation with our employees, and I may have missed this going in and out for, uh, medicinal chocolate or something, but, um, it's right. Um, but I really want to make sure we have a conversation with our employees about where we are. I, I'd like to see a survey, uh, go out, I don't know if you've considered that, but I, I really want them to, first of all, realize that we have consulted them regarding, uh, this. I don't want this to be another situation where people feel as though those people in central office, um, put another, gave us something else to bear. Um, so I very much want to make sure that our employees have an opportunity to feel as though they are part of the conversation and that they have an opportunity to, to give feedback. Um, beyond that, um, I really would love to see, and this may be what you said you're going to do, but I'd love to see, um, you know, a follow-up meeting where we can talk about what suggestions you are, um, allowing us, or not allowing, I'm saying that wrong, offering, yes, help me. Um, not enough chocolate, okay. Um, so I just really want to make sure that this isn't, you know, and I know you said you had a work group, but oftentimes that can be limited in terms of their reach, and I, I really want every employee to feel as though they had an opportunity to participate in the conversation. So, um, I'd like to make that one of the, the next steps. And, um, I, I also would like to see, and I guess this is along the specifically proposed measures to reduce the use of substitute, uh, substitutes overall. So slightly different, but the same.
Thank you, um, Ms. Strauss?
Okay, very quickly, I think probably a check to see what, what has been most effective recently in, in doing this. I think the work group is, is important. I would want to caution, we did, we did try many, many years ago requiring central office people to fill in some of those positions, and it didn't work because then the people who were in support position, supporting schools, they weren't getting their jobs done, and the schools didn't like it. Because then that work got pushed further down. If you want to use the opportunity as a learning opportunity, so that everybody understands what everybody's doing, that's a very different approach. But if we have people in central office whose jobs are not needed, then we should get rid of those positions. If they're needed to support schools, then they're needed to support schools. So, um, whether or not there's a buyback, there may be other ideas out there, but I do believe that Friday, and we've talked about that, we talked about it last year, the issue of the burden of, um, overuse of, uh, personal leave on Fridays. The other issue is that we have, um, and the unemployment rate is so low now, and when the economy picks up, I mean, we've seen this trend before, this is worse than we've seen in a long time. People have jobs or they have full-time jobs in schools. Often people work as a substitute in order to get a first in line, to become a teacher, and particularly they, they will sign on for a long-term sub-job, principal loves them, it's great. This is part of our issue, and we're trying to, to diversify our work, workforce as well. Um, but at any rate, there are a variety of reasons, and I think you, you have to go back to the drawing board and figure out a variety of reasons to help us fill these positions better. So I'm glad we did make some of the adjustments for our long-term subs because they were very angry with us when we, um, um, cut that pay. So, good luck, find some answers, come back, and we'll talk about it again.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. My first question, um, uh, really relates to, I think it's slide eight. Uh, and, and the, the data that you provided is this September one through February twenty-eighth, and you mentioned that it was, so you have consistent. Um, but it, that data then leaves out March, April, May, and half of June, uh, in terms of our data that we have. So, um, I, I'd like to understand if, and, and see some way to understand, when do we have, you know, what's the need during that period as compared to the other time periods during the school year? Uh, even if it's not easy to, even if you can't prepare it across several years, I'd like to just understand sort of, you know, what's happening in the fourth quarter, um, of the school year. I guess a lot of those same lines. When, when, when were you expecting to, to talk to us again about reducing the demand? Is there a, that summer?
Oh, well, we haven't, we haven't set a date, but we certainly want to be in a position to bring back, uh, some strategies and solutions that can affect next school year. I don't think we're gonna have anything between now and the end of the school year.
Okay.
So sometime by the end of the school year or over the summer to prepare for next year.
Okay, and, and when we have that conversation, I would also like to have a little more information about, we've got the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but, um, and we've got the number of, 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 the, the numbers for those days. But are there specific Fridays that, that, you know, are really, you know, filling out most of that number? Uh, or specific, you know, dates, and it's just a, for an understanding. All right, the next, the next question I have has, actually has to do with the long-term leave, um, or long-term fill, and because it seems most of this data really is oriented towards the daily substitute, uh, question. And I would like to see the data, how long, when we have a long-term fill requirement, what's the time period it takes to fill and find that long-term person? Uh, because I think that, that's a, a very critical substitute, uh, for, you know, a classroom. And, 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 and I think it also relates to the, the, you know, the value we're putting on bringing in, uh, retired teachers, you know, if we're, if we're, if we're seeing a lag, a, a kind of disproportionate lag, I'd, I'd want to understand that, um, when you come back to talk to us. Or maybe you have that information.
I, I was just thinking about how we're gonna collect that data, and I'm not sure that we're able to provide that. Uh, and there's a couple of different reasons. Um, the primary reason being that schools are out searching for these, the long-term subs on their own, and so we're not necessarily formally advertising the need anywhere. Um, so I don't have a way to capture that, uh, so I may not be able to provide that data point.
And some of it may be, you know, um, maybe you can't get complete data, but I think that, I guess I'm following up a little bit on Mrs. Schultz's, uh, point about, you know, the calculus B.C. You know, if we've got, you know, one, one sort of scale for substitute teachers and we have a long-term need to fill with somebody that's unique, are we then, you know, forced to wait, you know, twenty days because we're just having to move mountains to try to find somebody that might come in and do that job? And, and, and that's really unfair to that class if they're in that situation. So it may be talking to principals and just, you know, letting your fingers do your walking, uh, in terms of finding some of that data to get, get an idea of what's happening, and it may be coming out of, out of the work group to talk about that.
You talk about getting data that we have, one of the ways you might be able to start is looking at the positions that are vacant at the beginning of the year because the principals know that position's vacant. So to your point, where are they searching for to find that long-term sub to take over? Because if they know they're going, there's going to be a need for a long-term sub once the school year starts, our teachers are very resourceful and very good about going out and finding somebody that takes over their class because they want that continuity. But we might be able to look at how long does it take at the beginning of the year when there's a vacancy to find that? And that'll help get to the point you're trying to make, Mr. or the, the data you're after, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and, and I would just, um, uh, in terms of the demand side, I would echo Ms. Corbett Sanders that maybe we need to, we need to definitely come up with innovative ways if there's a way to have a, a personal leave, you know, uh, buyback, if you will, so that incentives, uh, the teachers to, you know, not take it on a Friday. I would be, that, the, I, I want to see all the possibilities, and I think involving the teachers in that discussion is critical because we don't want, we, we've got to have buy-in, uh, from that critical group to make sure that what we do is workable, I, but I think we might need to use some creativity. Um, I do agree also with Ms. Kies-Gamar that we need it to be consistent across schools. I, I would just say that giving principals perhaps the ability to, um, again, sort of have dynamic, uh, compensation ability, you know, within a range to try to fill that critical need if they need to, I think that'd be a very valuable, uh, tool for that, a principal to have.
Thank you, and before I go to two quick go-backs, I'll make just a couple of statements. I, you know, the, the point, um, that, um, Mrs. Strauss made about the, the economy being strong, that was, um, one of the things that, that we had talked about before, that with, uh, unemployment being so very low, and Mr. McDonald, I think you said it's what, three-point-three percent now in Virginia and two-point-something in Fairfax, which is great news. But it, uh, that is one of the reasons that, um, you know, our ability to hire subs is, um, has, has diminished, so. Uh, and I will agree with those that have said that, um, I, I think we should be looking primarily at demand. And if you look at, uh, slide eleven, the things that are in our control more than others are the, the vacant positions. Uh, if, if we could be filling those vacant positions, uh, permanently, that, that, that goes a, a long, long way. In fact, maybe it even makes up the whole, um, thing, um, for our, our fill rates, as well as the professional development. And, you know, our, our, our teachers need professional development, but maybe there's another way to provide it and in such a way that, um, we, we don't need a sub in the, in the classroom. I'm not sure what that is, um, but, uh, that, I think those are the two things that are most in our control. Sick leave really is kind of out of anybody's control for the most part. Personal leave, a little bit, but, um, but the vacant positions, if we can get those tackled. Uh, so I have two quick go-backs, and then we'll go to next steps. Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Schultz?
So can we, um, so I always ask for totals because then we don't have to total it ourselves, so I went and totaled it myself. And I, I have a data discrepancy problem. On this slide, those totals, just in case anybody wants to know, total a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-six days. Can we go to slide eight? That says a hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety days. Can we go to slide nine? That says a hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and nineteen days. So I, I don't know if that's filled, uh, that's requests.
Requests.
Okay, all right.
This is the days worked, so these are, are fills.
Then go to eleven again? No, it's the same.
Same period.
Okay, there's a, you, there's a data discrepancy problem there. So it's fifteen hundred and eighty-six days. I did not calculate it on, um, the hundred and nine thousand, I did it on the hundred and ten thousand. The thing that's missing from this is the money. And so, um, I did it, I did the whole, if, if you take everybody at the bottom, this is eleven million nine, ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, at the top end, if you did everybody at a hundred and fifty-three, it's sixteen point nine seven nine million. You, you, we have to understand the dollars that are associated with this. Um, the median is thirteen point seven six million, uh, the average is thirteen point eight nine, thirteen point nine million. So what you see represented up there, you know, is somewhere between, and we're not finished, somewhere between eleven point one million and, uh, basically seventeen million dollars. That is a lot of money on the table, and so quantifying it to be able to understand how we can mitigate it, and what I was saying about redirecting the money, so one, I would love.
Would you like that as the next step to get the total for?
Well, one, I would like, uh, um, some kind of a correlation between what's happening on slide eight to the slide, because there's.
So to understand the discrepancy.
To understand the discrepancy between the total days represented. Um, and then two, attribute the money, have a slide that attributes the financials.
Okay, all right.
So I have the, I, I have the answer to our first question.
All right, go right ahead.
If you could, Cam?
It's two parts, one, Sean mentioned earlier that we had to pull data from several different systems, and so the, the system being, the information being pulled on eleven is from our time management system. That's how we know the different types of leave that are being requested. That doesn't necessarily mean that the teacher's requesting a sub. You can be in a teacher position and not need a sub, and so it would show up on this chart, but it might, they might not necessarily have been put in for a substitute, a teacher workday. You put in, you put in leave, that's gonna be reflected here. They don't need a sub, so it's not gonna show up in the sub request.
But the title of the slide is substitute usage.
Could I say, could I suggest that, that we make that a next step for?
We'll make it, that's fine, we'll, we'll.
Rather than scroll through this right now. Let's get the answer to that, okay. Um, Ms. Palchak?
Yes, thank you. Um, quickly, just, A, want to reiterate a point that was made earlier, I don't remember where, that we should definitely lead from the top, so if we do end up going at some kind of restrictions, it should definitely be, you know, administration, um, not just teachers. Uh, my other question is, I guess, different kind of data I'm asking for, Ms. Schultz, is, um, by day, is there a way to kind of get a sense of, this is giving us sort of a random time period? Can we get a sense, average range, a mode for, like, in a given day, what we're looking at? You know, not just every Friday from September to February twenty-eighth, but an average Friday across the system? Like, how many requests we're getting for a sub, like, how, does that make sense?
Honestly, I'm, I'm still trying to understand what you. Honestly, I'm still trying to understand what your question is. We, we do have it by day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
But it's a total. I'm asking for an average.
Oh, you mean like if a calendar, like the school year calendar, and what it looked like on each day?
No, like take today, how many leave requests, substitutes do we have in our schools?
Average request per day, not by day. This is the whole summary.
This is the whole summary for?
So are, are, is there a overpreponderance of usage of substitutes in December, for example, than February?
Sorry.
Hang on, let's, let's let Dolly articulate what she wants to break down.
I just want to break it down for one day. This data is important, and it's helpful in comparing Monday versus Friday, and comparing to other years, but I'm wondering, right, if we were, I think you're understanding, if I just wanted to know, today, in Fairfax County, today, April 19th, 2018.
You want to see it by each day in the school year calendar?
Not every single day, but an average.
Average on Friday is 10,000 or 1,000 requests.
Or a range, if we see a huge difference between.
I think a range is probably going to give us the best angle on this.
That would be great.
And because, you know, we do have some Fridays that are lower-use Fridays, and we have some Fridays, for instance, the day before student holiday, where her usage goes up pretty significantly, and so I think that range will give you a better sense.
So do you want the range for each day or just Fridays?
Each day.
A range for each day.
If it's easy to have average and mode as well, or one that would be, you think would be helpful, I would just kind of want to get a sense of what we're doing.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Very good.
Sorry, other question, bigger, out of the picture, that, I'm just wondering if other systems are looking at, is there like a teacher apprentice slash sub program, that when we're talking about this amount of money, that is useful, just thinking out of the box? Are there other ways that systems are seeing are helpful to address substitute and people coming into the teaching profession?
We can check on that. I know there are some outside vendor companies that, that is one of the strategies they say. They say if you go with us as your substitute management system, here's our ideas, this apprenticeship, and so we can, we can do some research on that.
One of the things too is, we have some control, Chase, correct me if I'm wrong, over what our requirement is for a sub. We currently say it's 60 hours college credit, we don't have to have that requirement, we can make it less hours. You might have a younger teacher.
Right. And my question mostly, I see in independent schools, it's one way, we've increased our teachers of color through apprentice programs, and then there are also, or with our college programs, is there a way, when we have partnerships with colleges, to have them fill at least some of our substitute? That's just one question.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, last word, before we go to next steps.
Could you do a comparison of how many personal days we give to our staff versus the number of personal days that are given to each of the other competitors in the market or the other systems?
Yes, we've actually started that work already, and we, we did survey other school divisions, and so we have some of that data to.
That would be helpful, because that's part of the demand issue.
Okay, so with that, let's go to next steps, and I have several here. Okay, Ms. Hines? Oh, Pat isn't here, but has she left for the night? Okay. Well, I think she, she wanted a cost comparison, what does the budget cost to increase by $7, the daily rate for retiree, previous retiree pay for long, long-term substitute jobs? And so everybody who can support that? All right, that's approved.
Got that. Alice, didn't you give that?
That was the title.
No, she wants it just for long-term substitute retirees, so we're gonna, that's, we're gonna get that.
I thought you said it was additional 2 million.
But that was for every, that was for short-term, long-term, yeah, so I've got to get that from Ms. Sanders.
All right, so on slide six, this is Ms. Palchek, add the daily rate for FCPS for long-term assignments, to, I guess, to the presentation, is that right?
Just to the table, yeah.
Okay, is everybody okay with that one?
What is it?
To add a data point on slide 16.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, okay. Show long, this, Ms. Palchek, show long-term vacancies and fill rates by year for past few years or available data. So you're just looking for long, you're looking for.
So I don't know if you.
For long-term vacancies that need to be filled with a long-term sub, you'd like to look at, find out how many?
I think we have the data for short-term, what our vacancies and fill rate were, any information that we have on the long-term, how that might compare, it's a different.
Are you, are you supposing, are you supposing that when we took down the pay, the long-term vacancy rate went up?
Dr. Ramey, you're looking like you might be questioning this, or what?
I'm not supposing, I know we've had that conversation, and.
No, I was just conferring with Sean, just for clarity, so the, the charts we showed you are not just the short-term, they're, they're both short-term and long-term.
And I think Ms. Palchek wants it, wants it broken out by long-term, correct?
Yes.
All right, let's see how many people can support this one. Okay, that's a majority. Ms. Corbett Sanders, considering, so as part of their work on this, you would like for them to take a look at a leave buyback?
Amongst other things.
Amongst other things, but just, okay. Anybody who can say, this, it's not committing us to this, it's just saying that as part of their work, let's take a look at that.
Can I ask, is that something you guys can do? I mean, is that?
I mean, it's, it's looking at a suggestion, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Consider survey of employees. Ms. Kiesgau Mara, I think it went beyond, didn't you just, you wanted to have feedback such as a survey, or were you specifically saying a survey?
I want to make sure.
I'm just saying, I thought you'd said, or some sort of feedback.
Right, I want to make sure we get employee feedback.
Okay, get employee feedback through such methods as a survey.
Well, and can we assume that it's kind of widespread, so not just five employees in a working group, but?
I'm assuming that, but that's understood.
Okay. We like to be clear.
Okay, get a feedback. Such as a survey of employees before, before, before bringing a plan to us? It says before finally, before bringing a plan to us.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would like.
Okay.
I would like their feedback to be included in what we discuss, not to say that we can't have additional discussions, but at some point.
Okay, does it, does that capture it, what's up there now?
Is that, is that feasible for you?
Employee feedback. Okay, everybody who can support that? All right, that's a majority. Have follow-up work session for, I think that's already scheduled, I think that's already, so we, we can take that off, just because we've already, it's already in the next step, so.
Okay, I had a, there's something that, I talked about uniformity.
Okay, let's add, let's wait till we get to the end, and then we, but we'll, we'll be sure, we're going quick, we're going quick. All right, Mr. Wilson, are there specific Fri-, okay, so this gets to the issue of breaking out, where the issue is, are there specific Fridays or specific days with significant increase in substitute use? So for example, the day before a holiday, all right, how many?
How about just identify outliers?
Is that what?
And a, and a scatter graph would do that.
Okay, all right, how, how many people can support this next step? All right, that's our next step. Mr. Wilson again.
All charts for every presentation.
How, how long does it take to fill long-term substitute positions?
Yeah, just like provide data on how long, so I want to see data.
So provide data on filling long-term substitute positions, provide data on filling, how many people can support that? All right.
Do we have them?
We do, filling long-term, okay. Ms. Schultz, explain discrepancy between numbers on slide eight and 11, and attribute financials, oh, I think, aren't these two, are these two different things? I think you, you want the, and attribute financials to that information.
Yep, that's fine, that's it.
All right. Okay. Include slide showing usage on an average day across system or a range, I think, didn't we decide that it should be a range? All right, include a slide showing a range.
Each day of the week.
A range.
Daily range.
Because if, if there, I don't know how many Mondays there are, but if there's 100 and.
Just give me the average part in the range.
180 Mondays, well, there won't be 180 Mondays, but we'll say, oh.
Yes, per day, the average, per day, the range and average, that's all.
Well, okay, so let's see how many people can support that? All right. Review requirements for substitutes, what, what is that?
That was just a long-term ideas for other ways, whether it's with college programs, apprentice programs, that we might start to rethink.
Review changing requirements, is that, you want to review changing, no?
No. I mean, it could include requirements, but sources, yes, of.
Oh, okay, all right. And then I believe, I believe Mrs. Schultz had asked for a total cost of subs, right? Hadn't you, Mrs. Schultz?
The attribute financials.
Oh, okay, see, that's why I thought it should be broken out, because attribute financials, that's, that's not necessarily to.
It does, it would, it will.
Okay.
They put the money to the slide, it'll work out. But I, I, just going back to nine, it should say, I think, include slide showing a range of usage of each, of substit-, of.
Of each, of each day of the week.
Of each day of the week.
Right, of each day of.
I want range and average, thank you. Late, direct. I just want the average in the range, I just want to see it, that's all.
Of each day there. All right, so we're going to go back to this one, so it needs to be each day of the week, period. Is, is the, is getting, I have to ask this for myself, is getting an average, is that a cumbersome process to get an average on that, or is that, that's easy? Okay. All right, so how many people can support the new number nine? Then 11, Ms. Corbett Sanders, provide data showing number of personal days FCPS gives compared to other jurisdictions. Do you mean other local, local?
Other local jurisdictions.
Okay, so, so other, other local jurisdictions, okay. And Ms. Kiesgau Mara, you wanted to go back to, you had.
I just wanted to say, one of my concerns was making sure that.
Insure equity.
Can you hear me?
Of the, of policies, insure equities or uniformity?
Our policies with respect to.
Integrity of implementation, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The overall principle should be uniformity, and I also thought, I'm concerned about equitably, we're looking at both uniformity and equity in terms of how we deal with that, with the personal days.
And equity on, on personal.
Not the demand.
Okay, ensure uniform and equity.
Use, right.
In, in allowing personal days.
Right, one of the suggestions was something, I think, Mr. Wilson, you said something about paying, having, giving them the ability to pay and that sort of thing.
So how many people can support this? All right, and with that, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.